Good evening and welcome to the November, what is it, 28th meeting of the Glendale City Council. I couldn't really see it there. Being called to order at 6:18 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asadirian, Divine.
Here.
Kazakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here. And apologies to everyone for our late start. We were running late in our afternoon meetings. Most people don't know that we generally start at 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon. You just see the 6:00 o'clock part, but we've been going since 3:00. Anyway, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for our invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tangwa people. Today, let us take a moment to acknowledge the blessings that enrich our lives. We express gratitude for the simple joys that bring warmth to our hearts, the laughter of loved ones, the kindness of strangers, and the beauty found in everyday moments. Let us appreciate the strength and diversity, the power of compassion, and the opportunities that inspire us to grow. May we embrace gratitude not just in abundance but also in times of challenge for they offer us valuable lessons and resilience. With appreciation for the interconnectedness of our lives, let us honor and celebrate the many reasons we have to be thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. And now may we have your report, please?
Yes. Next is Agenda Preview of the Meetings of Tuesday, December 5, 2023 by Assistant City Manager John Tartalian.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. Next week, we have an afternoon Glendale Housing Authority meeting with only approval of minutes on the agenda. And we have what appears to be a fairly short agenda for the evening as well with only two items on the consent calendar. First one would be a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding adoption of plans and specifications for the park, manor, slope repair, and debris mitigation project. And the second would be a report from the Human Resources Department regarding the selection of an insurance broker for the city's health insurance program. Under action items, the City Manager will provide a report seeking direction from the Council regarding the formation of a human relations coalition, followed by a report from Community Services and Parks regarding the feasibility of dog parks at various facilities in the city. At 8C, we'll also have an action item from the Police Department regarding the acquisition of hardware and software upgrades to include in-car video systems, body worn cameras, drones, interview room cameras, and other technology to support the real-time intelligence center. And we'll have one last item that evening. That's a hearing regarding Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application for a property located at 1326 North Maryland.
Thank you. And what do we have next?
Next is a commendation for the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team.
Okay, well, this is an exciting moment. We have the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team. Do we have the entire team here in attendance? Looks like it. And we have the Principal of Glendale High School. And where is she? Back there, yes. And we have the head coach and assistant coach. And we are here to recognize and congratulate and honor the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team for a pretty stunning performance in statewide championships this year. So I will read the commendation, and it is to the entire team, but named here are Margie Kef... How do I pronounce it? Kefover?
Keefover.
Kefover, Margie Keefover, and Bill Whiting, the assistant coach. Could you please come to the podium while I read this?
With the trophies.
Oh, do you have the trophies there with you?
Two of the three.
Two of the three. Yeah.
Oh, look at those. Look at those. Okay. So congratulations on winning three CIF, which is California Interscholastic Federation Championships, and for bringing home Glendale's first ever statewide title. I commend your hard work, dedication, and commitment to your school and team. Congratulations on a job well done. Thank you for serving as a shining example to all and making Glendale High School and Glendale so proud. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success. Signed, Mayor Dan Brotman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure you will tell us more about this, but I know you've won three championships. First at the Division VI, which is... Who's in Division VI? Is that Glendale?
No, it's they rank the schools according to previous records and everything, and we're Division VI. Okay. This is in the Southern section, and it's kind of everybody's goal is to win a CIF championship. And usually when they say that, they're talking about the Southern section championship, which covers, I don't know, 300 or 400 high schools, broken into various divisions.
Okay, because then you went on to win the Division IV championship, which is the southern part of California?
Yeah, we run the Southern California Regional One.
Regional. And then you went on to play... Who did you play at the state level?
Marin Academy from San Rafael.
Okay.
Up north.
Okay, and you...
We beat them 3-1 for the title.
You beat them 3-1?
3-1.
Good job. So again, first ever state title won by a Glendale Girls Volleyball Team. So we are proud. I will bring this down for a photo op, but I think we have... Councilmember Divine wants to say something because she's got a lot of personal experience in this area.
Well, first of all, I wanted to bring the girls, all the young ladies up.
Oh, yeah, come on. Yeah, you can all crowd around, get on TV.
Wow. Okay. So where's Alina? Is it Alina?
Elena, yes.
Elena, you're the one that hits. You're the hitter. Yeah, I know. You play great. And you're a junior.
Yes.
Wow. And Ariana Vargas, you're a defense. You're the one that digs all the... Yes, yes, okay. I know. And Eileen Herrera. I'm just naming these from the... Eileen Herrera. And is it Mika Valiente?
Mika.
Yes, Mika. Mika, Mika. You say Mika and I say Mika. Well, I just want to congratulate all of you, young ladies, and the coaches. The reason I was so anxious to get you here and so proud that you've made this accomplishment is that in my background, I was a volleyball coach, a girls volleyball coach at San Gabriel High School. And so I know firsthand how much work it takes to get to your level, to get to that championship. You know, first you win the division, the little one, and then you go to the next bigger section, and then all of a sudden, it's a state, and it's fantastic. Another important thing is the fact that Glendale High School has a volleyball legacy in Nina Jorgensen. And I don't know how many of you have heard of her, but she coached at your high school for 36 years. She was an Olympic volleyball player. She also won a gold medal at the Pan American Games. And when I was coaching and I was just a young girl, she was at Glendale High School, and we used to have to come over and play your teams. And we used to go, oh, my God, we're going to play against Nina Jorgensen. She was absolutely famous and amazing, and now you are part of her legacy, and you have brought that full circle. And you should be so proud of yourselves, as all of Glendale is. And we're just proud to have you here and to congratulate you. So congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Kazakian is an alum of Glendale High, so he might have a...
Go Dynamiters, class of '94, along with our city clerk, who's also a Dynamiter, right? No?
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's right. So I want to also extend my congratulations. I remember Ms. Jorgensen. She was very well-known on campus. We had great athletic programs. And Glendale High School was a great school to have graduated from. I got a great education and got set on a path for success that I hope you will also embark on after this great athletic achievement. And thank you for bringing fame and glory and recognition to our jewel city. It's great to see a championship banner come back to Glendale High School, especially in women's volleyball. Congratulations. I'm very proud of you guys. I will say, I was not tall enough to play volleyball. I had my growth spurt after high school, so congratulations to y'all.
Well, congratulations, ladies and coaches and everyone at Glendale High School. What a great, great achievement that is. But what we didn't hear is that when Nina Jorgensen's teams were going to play San Gabriel, they were saying, oh, no, we're going up against Paula Divine's team. A little volleyball humor, but congratulations. I know this is something that you're going to remember for the rest of your lives, and you certainly have every reason to be so proud of it. Congratulations.
Stay there for a moment, and I'll bring this down. We'll have a photo op.
All right. Everyone with all the cameras.
Park Manor Slope Repair and Debris Mitigation Project. And the second would be a report from the Human Resources Department regarding the selection of an insurance broker for the city's health insurance program. Under action items, the city manager will provide a report seeking direction from the council regarding the formation of a human relations coalition, followed by a report from Community Services and Parks regarding the feasibility of dog parks at various facilities in the city. At 8C, we'll also have an action item from the police department regarding the acquisition of hardware and software upgrades to include in-car video systems, body worn cameras, drones, interview room cameras, and other technology to support the real-time intelligence center. And we'll have one last item that evening, that's a hearing regarding Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application for a property located at 1326 North Maryland.
Thank you. And what do we have next?
Next is a commendation for the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team.
Okay, well, this is an exciting moment. We have the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team. Do we have the entire team here in attendance? Looks like it. And we have the principal of Glendale High School. And where is she? Back there, yes. And we have the head coach and assistant coach. And we are here to recognize and congratulate and honor the Glendale High School Girls Volleyball Team for a pretty stunning performance in statewide championships this year. So I will read the commendation, and it is to the entire team, but named here are Margie Kef-- how do I pronounce it? Kefover?
Keefover.
Kefover, Margie Keefover, and Bill Whiting, the assistant coach. Could you please come to the podium while I read this?
With the trophies.
Oh, do you have the trophies there with you?
Two of the three.
Two of the three. Yeah.
Oh, look at those. Look at those. So congratulations on winning three CIF, which is California Interscholastic Federation Championships, and for bringing home Glendale's first-ever statewide title. I commend your hard work, dedication, and commitment to your school and team. Congratulations on a job well done. Thank you for serving as a shining example to all and making Glendale High School and Glendale so proud. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success. Signed, Mayor Dan Brotman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm sure you will tell us more about this, but I know you've won three championships. First, at the Division VI, which is-- who's in Division VI? Is that Glendale?
No, it's they rank the schools according to previous records and everything, and we're Division VI.
Okay, okay.
This is in the Southern Section, and it's kind of everybody's goal is to win a CIF championship. And usually when they say that, they're talking about the Southern Section Championship, which covers, I don't know, three or 400 high schools, broken into various divisions.
Okay, because then you went on to win the Division IV Championship, which is the southern part of California?
Yeah, we run the Southern California Regional One.
Regional, and then you went on to play-- who did you play at the state level?
Marin Academy from San Rafael.
Okay.
Up north.
Okay, and you, and you--
We beat them 3-1 for the title.
You beat them 3-1?
3-1.
Good job. So, again, first-ever state title won by a Glendale Girls Volleyball Team. So we are, we are proud. I will bring this down for a photo op, but I think we have-- Councilmember Devine wants to say something because she's got a lot of personal experience in this area.
Well, first of all, I wanted to bring the girls, all the young girl, young ladies up.
Oh, yeah, come on. Come on. Yeah, you can all crowd around, get on TV.
Well. Okay. So where's, where's Ali, Alina? Is it Alina?
Elena, yes.
Elena, you're the one that hits, you're the hitter. Yeah, I know, you play great, and you're a junior.
Yes.
Wow. And Ariana Vargas, you're a defense, you're the one that digs all the-- yes, 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 okay, I know, I know. And Eileen Herrera, I'm just naming these from the, Eileen Herrera. And is it Mica Valiente? Yes, Mica.
That's Mica.
Mica, Mica. You say Mica and I say Mica. Well, I just want to congratulate all of you young ladies and the coaches. The reason I was so anxious to get you here and so proud that you've made this accomplishment is that in my background, I was a volleyball coach, a girls volleyball coach at San Gabriel High School. And so I know firsthand how much work it takes to get to your level, to get to that championship. You know, first, you win the division, the little one, and then you go to the next bigger section, and then all of a sudden, it's a state, and it's fantastic. Another important thing is the fact that Glendale High School has a volleyball legacy in Nina Jorgensen. And I don't know how many of you have heard of her, but she coached at your high school for 36 years. She was an Olympic volleyball player. She also won a gold medal at the Pan American Games. And when I was coaching and I was just a young girl, she was at Glendale High School, and we used to have to come over and play your teams. And we used to go, oh, my God, we're going to play against Nina Jorgensen. She was absolutely famous and amazing, and now you are part of her legacy, and you have brought that full circle. And you should be so proud of yourselves, as all of Glendale is. And we're just proud to have you here and to congratulate you. So congratulations, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian is an alum of Glendale High, so he might have a--
Go Dynamiters, Class of '94, along with our city clerk, who's also a Dynamiter, right? No? Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. So I want to also extend my congratulations. I remember Ms. Jorgensen. She was very well-known on campus. We had great athletic programs, and Glendale High School was a great school to have graduated from. I got a great education and got set on a path for success that I hope you will also embark on after this great athletic achievement. And thank you for bringing fame and glory and recognition to our jewel city. It's great to see a championship banner come back to Glendale High School, especially in women's volleyball. Congratulations. I'm very proud of you guys. I will say, I was not tall enough to play volleyball. I had my growth spurt after high school, so congratulations to y'all.
Well, congratulations, ladies and coaches and everyone at Glendale High School. What a great, great achievement that is. But what we didn't hear is that when Nina Jorgensen's teams were going to play San Gabriel, they were saying, oh, no, we're going up against Paula Devine's team.
I don't think so.
But--
I don't think so.
A little volleyball humor, but congratulations. I know this is something that you're going to remember for the rest of your lives, and you certainly have everything, every reason to be so proud of it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stay there for a moment, and I'll bring this down. We'll have a photo op.
Okay.
Want to join us? Want to come? Come on. Okay, now, we're all going to turn around. Where are our assisting coach?
Sure. You're the captain.
Congratulations, champions, champions, all right. Congrats, congrats.
Two rows.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Congrats, congrats, ladies, congrats. Congratulations, boys. That's a big trophy. Somebody's got to hold this. Who's going to hold this? Congratulations. Where's the other one?
Back here.
Yeah, why doesn't somebody, somebody hold this up?
Congratulations. Hey. Were you one of the-- We have one that goes-- Congratulations. Nice job.
All right. Everyone with all the cameras. One, two, three. Can we get our principal up here, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to love mine, 9230.
Why do you come in? Oh. Where's our, where's our official city? Okay. Thank you. Give it a second. Oh. Go for it, go for it. Here's your--
Excuse me, but--
Go ahead.
Yeah, Coach Keefover wanted me to mention that of the six schools in the Division VI, Glendale High School, in the state, Glendale High School was the only public schools, school. They were all private schools.
Oh, wow. That is a--
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Okay, what is our next item?
Our next item is Identification of Nominating Panel for Arts and Culture Commission, and that's Najarian and Kasakian.
Okay, and is that, that's not something we have to vote on?
No.
No.
Okay.
And the following item is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, and do we have any request to poll items from the consent calendar?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, I have one that I would like to poll, which is Item G, 4G, the San Fernando Road Beautification Project. So if--
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, so let's take a vote on the other items.
Councilmembers Asadarian, Devine--
Yes.
Kasakian--
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Okay, could you read 4G into the record, please?
Yes. Public Works Regarding San Fernando Road Beautification Project Phase One: Adopt Plans and Specifications. One Resolution Adopting the Plans and Specifications for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project Phase One. Specification Number 3973. Plan Numbers 1 through 3121 and 18 through 117, 49 through 262, 50 through 712, 50 through 713, 50 through 714, and 50 through 715. And directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Okay, thank you. And I asked to have this polled because a question that I brought up in our briefings was whether we were going to be planting some of these 120 street trees, which are part of this project, on the railroad side, or whether they will be in the median, or whether they will be on the pedestrian side. And the reason I asked that was I have some concern that if we are building up a whole bunch of trees on the railroad side, that would make it more difficult down the road if we want to try to find a way to put in some kind of a bike path there, because nobody's going to want to pull out trees once they're mature. So I think in the briefing, I was told that we would only be replacing existing trees that are dying or dead on the railroad side, but then I think you sent a message saying that there are some others planned. Could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. So we are planning on planting about 40 trees on the railroad side, 25 of which are to replace, you know, dead or, you know, dying trees, and 15 for some additional shade, especially near, near bus stops. So that there is going to be an additional 15 trees on that side as well.
Okay, which bus stops do we have there?
There are some, there are some bus stop, but this is more for shade. So we're adding some, about 15 trees was identified by our urban forester as needed on that side.
Okay. My, I mean, my preference would be that we plant more kind of shrubbery rather than trees, so that we just are keeping our options open. Is that something that we could, could we make changes and do more of the tree planting where the pedestrians are?
So in terms of adding a bike lane, it was always envisioned because of the number of utilities and, and some trees on that side, but it was more on the inside of the railroad right of way. So where, you know, there's a fence there, so the idea was to add the, the Class II bike lane on that side of things. So hopefully, well, we'll see how the, what the plans are with the high-speed rail by the state that's coming through, and depending on how that project moves forward, then that's where we were planning on adding the Class II bike lane. So adding the trees on the, on the railroad side on the other side will not have any impact because of the, again, the lack of, you know, there's too many, too many conflicting utilities on that side for us to be able to add a bike lane on that side. So again, it was always envisioned to be put inside the fence.
Okay. I thought that we had some, that there was some potential that we could look at down the road, and I didn't want to preclude it by, by planting a whole bunch of trees. So I would, I would rather we were able to minimize that.
Well, we'll take a look at it again. The 25 are for replacement only, so we're talking about 15 trees. But we'll take a look at it to, to see if there's any opportunities for, for minimizing. But that's a long stretch, so it, you know, it may not be as, probably won't be as impactful, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay, all right. So can I get a motion on that item?
I'll move G.
All second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadarian, Devine--
Yes.
Kasakian--
Yes.
Najarian--
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. What is next?
Next, our city council and staff comments.
Okay. Who would like to start? Councilmember Devine.
Hey, I was just going to mention that Montrose kicked off the Christmas holiday season. When was that, Saturday night, Sunday, Friday night? They had the Montrose Christmas Tree lighting, was festive and fun as always. And just a reminder for everyone, Saturday will be the Montrose Parade. So you want to get up there and get your seats and your curbside view of the Montrose Christmas Parade due to start at around 6 o'clock. And I want to mention that the mayor was at the tree lighting and Councilmember Najarian, and thanks to the fire department and police department, of course, for being there with all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
I do have a couple comments. The first one is, on December 9th, MetroLink is going to be reviving their Holiday Express. Do we have some film on that? The Holiday Express is a holiday-themed train for, geared towards children, but adults as well. The closest station for us is the Burbank Station, and at 4:30 on Saturday, December 9th, people will be admitted entrance onto the express train with carolers, Santa Claus, activities for children, sing-alongs, and it will go from the Burbank Station north to Santa Clarita, and it will return to Burbank Station. The entire round trip should be about, about an hour and a half. And tickets are available online, and you can play the video and get a sense as to what we've got. Stop. Okay, here we go. This was last weekend at a different location. Kids under 2 are free. They need to sit with a parent, however.
Hi, I'm Mary Chalina. First of all, it's always good to say it's little. One horse open sleigh.
So it's a fun way to get on the MetroLink system and bring the kids along and have a good time for the holiday season. The next thing is a request that we place on the agenda, an item. And many of you may know that the old city of Jerusalem is split into four quarters: Armenian Quarter, Christian, Muslim Quarter, and the Jewish Quarter. There currently is a dispute underway on some property in the Armenian Quarter. There have been some confrontations between Israeli police, settlers, developers, and members of the Armenian community. I would request that we place on the agenda the opportunity to write a letter to the, to all parties involved. I believe this would probably be, I think they're under, the old town is under the administration of the Jerusalem City Council. There's a mayor. I met the mayor, actually, about eight years ago. And urge them to act with cool heads, implore that there, that there be a peaceful resolution, and that all actions be done under the rule of law. They want to take sides in it, but I want, especially the Armenian community, which only numbers a few hundred at this point, that we are thinking about them and to let the, the authorities know that we're also thinking about them, and we hope that there can be a, an equitable resolution to this issue.
I'd be happy to second that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that, okay, doesn't actually need a second because we're going to put it on the new business agenda for next week, but appreciate you bringing that up. That's it? Okay, Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes, I do have a number of items I'd like to raise. First is, I'd like to, again, urge our staff to look into and, and bring forth to us whatever changes we need to bring about to close some of the loopholes that some entities are now using for Airbnbs. If there is an issue with us having the appropriate number of staff or figuring out a way to implement enforcement of our, of our rules, I'd like us to have an agendized discussion on that. I know that staff has mentioned that that's coming as part of a parcel of issues, or you're looking into it, I think, with other departments, but I would like us to get a report back as to what's happening with some of these locations and these specific addresses that have been brought to us. The other is, I would like us to agendize and have a discussion. I'd brought this up a number of, probably a couple of years ago, and at the time, the price tag gave, gave me pause, so we didn't pursue it further, but I'd like us to agendize to discuss in the upcoming budget study sessions and cycle the funding of our own prosecution of misdemeanors and the prosecution of certain crimes in our city. We know that part of the issue that we are experiencing in terms of upticks in crime and just general concerns about public safety is the fact that right now at the county level, we are not seeing enough prosecutions, and there is this catch-and-release, almost game that is being played between those individuals who keep perpetrating certain crimes and offenses and, and our law enforcement who keeps trying to get a grasp on that. So the city attorney had drafted a memo to council members. I'd like us to have a more public discussion on that. I would also like us to have a study session or an information-only report. Fairly soon, there's going to be no staff members left here at the city who were around when the Americana was conceived and built and brought to reality in this community. It's now, I think, an iconic part of the downtown and our shopping culture and, and the downtown area of Glendale, but there's still a lot of questions that people will often have, you know, who is the public space belong to? What were the agreements that made it happen? What is the agreements in regards to, was there any discussions about profit sharing of parking? So I think it's important for us to have that discussion or report from staff. I know Mark Barry was one of them, Gillian Van Miden was very involved in it. To get that memorialized and on the record and have an opportunity to ask questions so we have it be a part of our institutional memory moving forward, once those individuals are no longer with the city that, when those times come. Lastly, again, I want to urge everyone to attend the Montrose Christmas Parade. It's going to be very exciting. It's fun, now that I think COVID is long past in our rearview mirror. We're seeing a lot more people attending events, and it'll be great to see all of you out there on Saturday. I look forward to seeing you. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, I have two items. First is with regard to the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Devine and I interviewed several candidates, some very good candidates. We have decided that we would like to put forward Mr. Jeffrey Head to fill the open slot that's, that's currently, that we currently have. I think we might have another one coming up that there's another panel on. You're on another panel, Councilmember Devine, I think. But for this position, we agreed that we would like to nominate Jeffrey Head. So I guess that will come back next week, and we can give more information about him because I forgot to bring his, his CV with me. But he has a very impressive background in, in this area and will bring a lot of, a lot of knowledge to the work we do. So that's number one. Number two is, I attended a coyote safety town hall, maybe we could call it, or a coyote safety briefing that was held at the Police Community Room last week sometime, I forget what day it was. Somebody from the Pasadena Humane Society came out and presented on things that we can do to better manage life with coyotes amongst us. It was a good presentation. Sadly, there were only three people in the community that came. Oh, now I remember when it was. It was the day before Thanksgiving, and that could be why there were only three people. So good content, but obviously not the kind of audience that we want. So I would like to ask if, and I don't know if this needs to come back as a report or not, but that we, we look at some of the things that we can be doing, both in terms of regularizing some of these, or doing, maybe not regularizing, but, but doing a series of these events at times, and we're going to attract more people. There were also a number of recommendations that came out of this that I thought were interesting. One of them, an obvious one, is, you know, putting lids on all of our trash cans in our parks and around the city, because that is, tends to be an attractant for coyotes when they can find free food. And, and just other ways that we can do education. The person from the Pasadena Humane Society mentioned, you know, door hangers in areas where, where there's a lot of coyotes, because presumably in those areas, there could be people putting out food, not necessarily for the coyotes, but putting out food and water and inadvertently creating an attractant for them. And there were a couple other interesting ideas that were presented, as well as I know that Pasadena has kind of instituted a more formal-- presentation. Sadly, there were only three people in the community that came. Oh, now I remember when it was. It was the day before Thanksgiving, and that could be why, there were only three people. So, good content, but obviously not the kind of audience that we want. So I would like to ask if, and I don't know if this needs to come back as a report or not, but that we, we look at some of the things that we can be doing, both in terms of regularizing some of these, or doing, maybe not regularizing, but doing a series of these events at times, and we're going to attract more people. There were also a number of recommendations that came out of this that I thought were interesting. One of them, an obvious one, is, you know, putting lids on all of our trash cans in our parks and around the city, because that is, tends to be an attractant for coyotes when they can find free food. And, and just other ways that we can do education. The person from the Pasadena Humane Society mentioned, you know, door hangers in areas where, where there's a lot of coyotes, because presumably in those areas, there could be people putting out food, not necessarily for the coyotes, but putting out food and water and inadvertently creating an attractant for them. And there were a couple other interesting ideas that were presented, as well as, I know that Pasadena has kind of instituted a more formal program. I don't know, you know, there was a lot of press behind it. I don't know exactly what elements are in it that we may want to adopt. But if we could look at all that, and it looks like the city manager has something to say, because we've, we've had these conversations, you know, by the time it comes up here on council, we've all, you know, talked about it, so.
Appreciate that, Mayor Brotman. If your intention is to have additional educational sessions for the public, we can most definitely work with Pasadena Humane Society to see if they can plan them. But if you're looking for a more formal coyote management program, then we will need to place this on the new business agenda and have a discussion and bring back a report with different options for your consideration.
Okay, then I think I would like to do the latter. Okay. All right. Any staff comments?
I, I have a comment.
Okay, please.
One second. Glendale Women Today, the launch of the new report on the status of women and girls in Glendale, was held last Wednesday at the Glendale Adult Recreation Center. Despite the rain, we had a packed room, an over 80 attendees. And among the attendees were Mayor Brotman, Mayor Protam Ellen Asatrian, Councilmember Paula Devine. We had also representatives from different organizations, like the YWCA, ARS, and others. And, and this is a picture of the Chair of the Commission, Diane Lambott, speaking. The event was organized by the Education Ad Hoc Committee of the Commission on the Status of Women in Glendale, and also in collaboration with the City Clerk's Office. And the report, which was translated into Korean, Tagalog, Spanish, and Armenian, was shared with the public, with members of the public and our community partners. And if you would like a copy of the report, you can visit my office, the City Clerk's Office, or you can visit the commission website. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next?
Next, our community event announcements, and we have one card.
Did you verify that this is a community event announcement? A real community event announcement? I mean, I'm saying that, I mean, let's be honest, I'm saying that because the last time, this is Mike Mohill, the last time he came back, came out, he said it was a community event announcement. It was not. And when I asked if it was a community event announcement, as he walked away, he chuckled. So we don't game the system here. If this is not a true blue community event announcement, it's the last one I'm going to allow you to give. So I hope this is real.
Can our city clerk, please show the picture of that man up there? That's a true hero in the city of Glendale. He's being honored on the ninth, on the 10th of December. His name is Private First Class Sato S. I can't pronounce his name correctly, but Munamori was a second-generation Japanese-American nishi. Munamori was born and raised in Glendale, California. Japanese-American PFC Sato arrived at Fort Arthur, California, where he was, where he was signed up for the US Army just one month before the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor. PFC Munamori rose into the withering fire, died for the bomb, and smothered its blast with his own body. With swift supremacy, heroic action, the PFC saved two of his men and the cost of his own life, and did much to clear the path for the company's victories and advancement in Europe. In 1946, PFC Sato became the first Japanese-American to be awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. Let me repeat myself, the Congressional Medal of Honor. And it was given posthumously. The seat at Glendale on Saturday, December the 9th, 2023, at 10:00 AM, will honor PFC Sato Munamori by naming the corner of Isabel and Broadway. That's right outside City Hall, where all the different memorials are for our soldiers who have passed away, unfortunately. There would be a public and history gathering in the celebration of his life. Did you know that only 18.5% of the Medal of Honor winners had been awarded posthumously? Japanese-Americans were rounded up and their property was confiscated during World War II without the due process of the law. Today, this is a black eye on the American history. Mayor, this is a true hero. Every week when the city clerk talks about those Indians, she should include a man like this man right here, who is, who defended our country. So someone like our city manager, our city clerk, can always bring up these Indians who were here 200 years ago, and what have they done today? Thank you. I'm a Vietnam veteran, by the way.
Okay. What is next?
Next, our adoption of ordinances. City Attorney, a city attorney regarding ordinance amending section 9.25.050 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 pertaining to exemptions to the city's ban on the possession of firearms and ammunition on city property introduced by Najarian on 11/14/23.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this ordinance was introduced at the last meeting, which would modify the city's municipal code provisions related to the possession of firearms and ammunition on city-owned property, to carve out a few additional exemptions that's beyond what's currently in the code. I presented a more detailed report last time, so happy to answer any questions the council may have with respect to this item. It was introduced last, last meeting, and we are asking the council to adopt it tonight.
I'll move the item.
Any, any questions or comments?
No, Paul's second.
Okay. And roll call, please. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Asatrian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
As a tenant, but yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
I will say the same. Reluctantly, yes, because this is the best that we can get. But yes. Okay, so that passes. Next item?
Next item is Glendale Water and Power regarding ordinance establishing electric rates and charges for electric services provided by Glendale Water and Power Department for fiscal years 2023, 2024 through 2027, 2028, introduced by Devine, 11/14/23.
Mr. Galani.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council. We don't have a formal presentation this evening, but I will do a quick recap of our presentation at the last meeting, which was on November 14. You'll recall, GWP staff and their consultant presented a comprehensive report on this item, which included cost-of-service analysis. As part of that analysis, it became evident that the revenues that GWP is going to collect or has collected will not keep pace with the full cost of services provided to their customers, in addition to not being able to fund the necessary capital improvement projects. The primary causes of the deficits are the increasing cost of wholesale purchase power, materials, equipment, labor, variable fuel prices, decline in revenues, and factors such as higher interest rates for debt services. Therefore, GWP is proposing a three-year rate increase, averaging 14.8%, 11.3%, and 11.3%. That will take effect on January 1st, 2024, July 1st, 2024, and July 1st, 2025, with no increases for the years 2026 and 2027. These rate adjustments will enable us to fund the previously approved Grayson Repowering Project, the Shawl Canyon Biogas Project, and the future building and fleet electrification programs. Just as a reminder, without these rate increases, we'll not be able to qualify for the rating required to issue the bonds, as well as the necessity to complete these projects that I mentioned, and the critical system upgrades. Not implementing the rate increases will have enormous negative, long-lasting consequences, including inability to supply the city's electric load, which means resorting to blackouts, inability to fund, invest in, or participate in local or outside-the-area renewable projects, inability to meet councils' established goal of 100% clean energy by 2035 and beyond, inability to continue the GWP transfer to general fund, and the direct devastating impacts to our essential services, breach of statutory and contractual obligations to FERC, State of California, SCAPPA, and BASSA, inability to purchase additional transmission capacity, if possible, termination of existing contracts and professional services agreement with the potential claims of damages. This will apply to the Grayson and Shawl Biogas Projects currently underway, potential of being assessed hefty fines by FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and ultimately, the potential loss of our publicly-owned utility. With that, suffice to say that I respectfully urge you to adopt the proposed electric rate increases as presented this evening. GWP staff and our consultants are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. We had an extensive discussion of this at our last meeting, two weeks ago. So I don't think you want to rehash it, but I'll see if there are any comments from around the table.
I'll move the item.
Just, just one second. Any, any comments? Mr. Kasakian?
Well, I mean, my concerns are regarding those who are most severely impacted by these. Obviously, doing the things that we need to do to keep our utility healthy aren't always comfortable financially, but some people are going to be impacted more severely than others. And I understand that there is a follow-up item on this agenda addressing that. Those would be my only comments regarding this.
Yeah. And I would just say, we know this is going to be a hardship for many people. We don't relish doing this. We never like increasing rates, but we need to keep the utility solvent. There are projects that are critical that we, we complete, and they are expensive, including major upgrades to our infrastructure, our, our electric grid, which is pretty dated, and, and increased costs that we face, whether it's, it's labor, it's fuel, or any other number of things. So with a heavy heart, I think we are all approaching this as, as something that we really cannot see any alternative to doing. So I just wanted to, to say that before we go for a motion in a second. We do have a motion.
For all those reasons.
Second.
And we do have a second, and now we'll have a roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay. And if we could move item 8C up, because that is directly related to the utility rate increase. So could you, we're going to make that swap. If there's no objection, and 8C, could you read that into the record?
Sure. Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Care Program Electric Bill Discount Adjustment, One Resolution Adjusting Glendale Water Empower's Glendale Care Program Benefit from the current rate of $17.50 to $20.50 effective January, January 1st, 2024, to $23.50 effective July 1st, 2024, and to $26.50 effective July 1st, 2025, in alignment with the proposed electric rate increases outlined in the Electric Rates Cost of Service Analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Galani.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council. As you noted two weeks ago, when we brought the electric rate increase adjustment to council, as part of your deliberation, you directed staff to look into increasing the electric bill discount program. And this is a two, two-step process. This was essentially the low-hanging fruit that staff has been able to provide for your consideration. At a future date, early next year, we'll bring back, the other request was to expand the qualification threshold for low-income residents and customers. Brian Salazar of GWP, who's Acting Business Transformation Manager, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of council. So the Glendale Care Program Benefit Increase, well, actually, the Glendale Care Program was approved by council in 2008 and is funded through the Public Benefits Charge Program. It was originally modeled after California alternate, alternative rates for energy program that provided a 20% discount for low-income customers of electric and gas investor-owned utilities. So to encourage conservation, in 2008, GWP elected to set the discount at a flat rate of $10 per month for eligible participants, which at that time equaled approximately 20% of the average low-income customer's bill. As illustrated in the table here, if I can get this to work. There we go. All right. As illustrated in the table, over the last 15 years, GWP has made small adjustments to account for rate increases that add up to a $7.50 to the discount. The proposed adjustments in our recommendation include a cumulative $9 increase over the discount, to the discount, over the five-year COSA period. These discounts would be implemented to coincide with the effective dates of the rate increases, essentially an additional $3 on January 1st, 2024, another $3 on July 1st, 2024, and an additional $3 on July So when we look at the impact to the average low-income bill, it would be an increase of approximately $10 per month for each rate increase period. So if you look down at the bottom line there, the current percentage of our $17.50 discount on the low-income customer's average bill, it represents 24% of that bill. And so we use that as a target to spread across each rate increase. And that comes out to roughly three, roughly $3 per increase to maintain that 24% average. So to conclude, this benefit increase was initiated based on feedback that GWP received during the COSA community meetings that we held mid to late October, which also aligns with council's comments during the introduction of the COSA ordinance two weeks ago. And to that point, GWP will continue to assess the Glendale Care Program and explore additional opportunities potentially, to potentially broaden the program, and we will report back to council within the timeline that we communicated then.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, just for clarification. So their adjusted bill increase was, I'm sorry, wait. Yeah, the adjusted, proposed, adjusted bill increase was $10.39. They were supposed to be paying like $85, and it came down, after the discount, $64 in 2024.
That's correct.
From, so it went from 85 to 60, 65?
That's correct.
Okay, good. I'm happy that we were able to do this. Thank you.
Comments? Questions?
I'll move the item.
No, I asked a lot of my questions during the briefings, but I will, again, bring some of those items up now for it to be on the record. I would like to I would like to know how many shut-offs we've had of people who are on this program, how many people, despite being on the program, possibly fall behind on payment of their utility bill. I think that we need to have a clear idea of how effective this program is, and in general, how many, I would like to know annually how many shut-offs we've had in the city, and for what reasons they are, you know, how far behind people have fallen. What we just approved in terms of the cost-of-service adjustments to keep the utility healthy and functioning is going to have a severe impact on a lot of residents. And as I stated earlier, it's going to have the greatest impact on those individuals who are living paycheck to paycheck, who are of limited means, and have no ways of increasing their monthly income. So I would like us to look at even additional ways outside of this program to help individuals who may fall on hard times or who fall behind, as well as getting statistics and having a more clearer understanding of how these programs are either helping or doing, or ways we can do more to help individuals.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the council, Scott Nolan, Assistant General Manager, Power Management at Glendale Water and Power. Excuse me. With respect to the outages or turnoffs associated with this, first, I would talk about the CAP program. The CAP program helped a great many people who couldn't afford to pay bills, especially starting during the COVID era and moving forward. There would have been no shut-offs associated with that. I will not say there were none at all, so we will go back and we'll dig up that information for you, but we go out of our way to make sure we don't shut off people until the absolute last moment, if it's necessary at all. We will contact people, discuss with them payment options. We go out of our way to reach people whenever there's issues. And the CAP program actually helped people pay those bills upfront. Again, we are going to do a deep dive on the Glendale Care Program in general. This is just our first step. This was low-hanging fruit and a simple way to get something addressed right now that we can put into action. We are going to look at, as City Manager Galanian mentioned, the breadth approach, whether or not we can expand the number of people who would qualify in this for the low-income supports. And then we'll dig in and see if there's some type of hybrid model that we can maybe put together. But for us right now, and quickly addressing this concern, this is the most effective way to do it.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it's important for everybody out there to understand that this is something we are doing now because it's something we could do quickly.
Yeah.
And within our public benefit charge budget, right? But staff will come back. When do we think, what's our timeframe for looking at other ways we can potentially broaden or deepen this program?
Um, I'm saying, tentatively, early next year, January, February.
Okay. Obviously, the sooner the better because we know these new rates are going to be going into effect on January 1st. January 1st. And we, these are our lowest-income customers who are now, you know, we're helping out, although their rates are, you know, their rates are still going up. We're just making sure that their rates are not going up more than everybody else because we're keeping that benefit in line, right? In line on a percentage basis with their average bill. I guess that's what you've done, which makes sense. But, yeah, we would like to see, you know, as soon as possible, how we can widen this maybe up to a slightly higher income level, as well as maybe a focus on people that are seniors, people that are disabled, people with large families, you know, other categories that we know are going to be hurting, and we want to try to support within our PBC budget, or potentially, I guess, outside of our PBC budget. Potentially, we're going to have to look at our general fund. So, right, that's on the table, I hope.
Yep. Well, if we're leaving no rock unturned?
Unturned, okay.
So we're going to look at all the options.
Okay, but I'm glad we're doing this quickly. This is good. Okay, motion?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Council members, Asadarian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. What's our next item, please?
Our next item is Action Item A, Community Development Regarding Formation Of A Project Development Team For Vision Zero Action Plan. One motion directing staff to request the Transportation and Parking Commission and the Sustainability Commission to each select a commissioner to serve as ad hoc members of the city's newly-created VZAP project development team.
Okay, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Member of City Council. I'll turn it over to our new Associate Planner, Ismaila Perez?
Yes. Thank you for getting that.
Is this your maiden trip to city council?
Let's say so.
Okay, whatever that means. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council members. Staff is here today to ask for permission and authority to request one member from the Transportation Parking Commission and Sustainability Commission to be part of our project development team for the Vision Zero Action Plan. The PDT is crucial in guiding city staff on strategies, goals, and tactics to make Vision Zero a success. The group is made up of city staff, advocacy groups in the community, and regional stakeholders. We recently had our kickoff meeting with city staff of our technical working group on September 2023 to establish a foothold on Vision Zero, but we must proceed in getting greater representation by completing our recruitment to our PDT, which includes our commissioner members. And we provided a presentation here for you. Let's see. That's what I figured. Okay. So what is Vision Zero? Vision Zero is a strategy that eliminates all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. So why Vision Zero over any other strategy? Vision Zero places a shift into how we plan and design our streets with safety in mind through education, engineering, and enforcement. So why Vision Zero? Again, we can prevent traffic deaths by anticipating human error and reducing the severity of crashes and injuries resulting in zero deaths, and that's the main goal of Vision Zero, reducing fatalities and crashes into zero. Vision Zero uses the model redundancy that allows for an integrated layer of protection that anticipates human error in its layered approach. This way, if human error occurs, there is a layer of protection within the system to anticipate human error and prevent further fatalities or crashes and severe injuries. The current policies do not currently integrate or act in accordance in matters that lead to severe crashes or fatalities, which is displayed on the right-hand side. VC will create, sorry, so Vision Zero will create a data-driven approach that will focus on engineering enforcement and education. How will this start? This will start with our understanding of our cities, such as our transportation network, our systems, and how drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians alike interact with our system. To do that best, we need city staff, regional stakeholders, as well as advocacy groups in the Glendale community. The current slide that you see right now is a list of approved city staff members for our project development team. We are going to reach out for regional stakeholders like LA County Public Health, LA Metro, and SCAG, and as well as you can see, the commissioners that we are asking for permission to ask will be a pivotal role in that project development team. Here on the next slide, we have a current list of PDT members from the public that we will be reaching out to to be also members of the project development team. If you allow us to go ahead and ask the commissioners to become members of our project development team, we will go ahead and then proceed on finalizing our PDT list, and then review our draft outreach plans with existing networks, crash data analysis, and then we can begin in engaging and creating a toolkit for engagement, develop performance measures and goals, as well as develop and implement a Vision Zero action plan. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, let's see. Do we have any questions on Vision Zero generally, or on these, I guess it's, you're asking us to authorize the addition of two members to this group? One member from the Transportation Parking Commission, one member from the Sustainability Commission, who the commissions themselves would select.
That is correct.
Mayor and council members, you can also provide recommendations or suggestions regarding the outside stakeholder members, if there are other organizations you'd like to participate or anything.
Okay.
My question is, is there a template for Vision Zero that you might get from other cities that you will be using or could use?
So our approach will look at what other, so our approach will look at what other cities have implemented already, what has been successful and what has been unsuccessful, and we will go ahead and adapt those policies to create our own.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I'm fine with approving the additional selection of those individuals. One of the things I'd, again, urge staff to do is, and we had a little bit of this discussion in the afternoon session on another item, sometimes the areas that are most heavily impacted, the densest parts of the city are the ones that don't necessarily have the plethora of organized community groups like homeowners associations or, you know, other activist organizations or issue-oriented organizations. So I would like to urge you to find ways of doing outreach, and those areas are going to require a little bit of a heavier lift. There will be a heavier lift from staff to go to neighborhoods where we know there have been instances of traffic accidents involving vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists, and surveying and talking to individuals who've lived in those areas or who know what they need on their streets and what they envision as making those streets and sidewalks and neighborhoods safer. So I think that some of the groups here mentioned are great, but I would urge you to also consider expanding, casting a wider net. For instance, the PTAs, they're fine, but not all schools have an active and functioning PTAs. And the ones that struggle with parent-teacher association groups are oftentimes the schools in the areas of the community that have the densest populations, sometimes immigrant populations, sometimes limited English proficiency populations. And I can tell you, as a parent of a child who attends one of those schools, you can see that there's definitely some barriers to having individuals whose children go to those schools understand some of the rules and regulations as how to ensure safety for children and families in the area. Drop-off at some of these schools, at all the schools around the beginning of the school year, it's kind of nightmarish, and there are others, but some areas are more heavily impacted than others, and I think those are places we ought to be looking at. We have had unfortunate incidents and fatalities at at least one of our school sites in the last 10, 15 years. I think it was on the Keppel Toll Hoover Campus Area, which necessitated that median barrier that was placed there. So particular attention to the schools, again, outside of just saying, we reached out to the PTA, and we have PTA involvement. Look for whatever groups each school has, and who are some of the thought leaders and spokespeople for the groups there. So those are some of my thoughts.
Okay. And I, you know, I'm good, obviously, with adding someone from each of those commissions. I'm looking at the list, and I have a couple names. Well, I have a question first. So we have the homeowners association through the Coordinating Council, but then I see you've called out Glendale Riverside Rancho, I guess because they're not part of the Coordinating Council. Is that why they're identified separately?
There are certain neighborhoods that are not represented. We would need to go back and check, but I do believe that's why.
Yeah, could you check, because, you know, other neighborhoods, I think, would be very interested in participating, or Adams Hill, Montecito Park, which is an area that's had some troubles with one kid who was hit and severely injured on a bike, and they've come to us, and we've been working with them to make some improvements there, but I think it's something they're very focused on, and maybe there are some others. So if we could look at who's not represented in that and invite them to participate. There's also an organization that at times has been more active and at times less active called Drive Safe Glendale. I don't know if you're aware of them?
Yes, actually, I believe I've given a presentation to them before on a different subject, but...
Yeah, probably. I would reach out and include them since they're specifically about safe driving and reducing, you know, pedestrian and bicycle, and car-on-car collisions. So I would reach out to them. And then there's a group which is not based in Glendale, but they take a regional approach called Streets For All. Are you familiar with Streets For All?
Yes.
Michael Snyder is the guy that runs that. Very well-respected and very knowledgeable on this. They may be able to, you know, help with some ideas because they look at these issues regionally so they can kind of help us with, you know, what neighboring cities are doing. I would just suggest some of those.
Mayor Brotman, Councilmember Kasakian has asked that we reach out to the AAPI community and see if they want to have representatives joining this group.
Okay. All right. So with that, that's all you need, right? That direction, and we'll just, can we get a motion to memorialize all of that?
I'll move the item.
The motion is basically to, on the TPC and sustainability, and then your direction will be the stakeholders that you suggested.
Okay. So we've got a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Council members, Asadarian, Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And our next item, please.
Next item is Action Item B, Community Development Regarding Ordinance Amending Chapter 9.30 Rental Rights Program. One, Ordinance For Introduction Amending Chapter 9.30 Of The Glendale Municipal Code 1995 Relating To The Rental Rights Program. Two, Motion Directing Staff Regarding Administrative Citations.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Member of City Council. First off, I wanted to commend the team of Peter Zorvac, our Assistant Director of Community Development, Lucy Varpetian, our Principal Assistant City Attorney, Cipan Zadorian, our Housing Analyst, who have done a tremendous job of the analysis, the coordination, the outreach, and finally, putting together a comprehensive report and presentation. So it's a team effort, a tech team of presenters, and Mr. Zorvac's going first, followed by Ms. Varpetian, and then Mr. Zadorian.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I just wanted to make a few introductory remarks before turning this over to Lucy and Cipan for their parts of the presentation. As stated in the report, this review of the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance started back well over a year ago, when the City Council had determined that it wanted a comprehensive review of the ordinance and proposed improvements to it. Understanding that there are many stakeholders and many opinions as to what an ordinance should look like, the City Council charged this review to an ad hoc committee made up of professionals in the area of rental housing. The committee was charged with meeting in an open and balanced setting, and the committee did just that, conducting 12 meetings over a year period in which they looked at each component of the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance, and through debate and discussion, were able to come to recommendations to the City Council. The committee was made up of seven members who represented both landlords and tenants. I think it's important to acknowledge the work of the committee. The committee members were, and we have it on the... able to come to recommendations to the City Council. The committee was made up of seven members who represented both landlords and tenants. I think it's important to acknowledge the work of the committee. The committee members were, and we have it on the slide. They were made up of Jennifer Schultz-Bertele, who's a landlord representative, Raz McGregorian, also a landlord representative, and James Sun, the final landlord representative. Tenant representatives were made up of Teal Marchon, Isabella Tavanyan, David Zagarian, and the neutral representative was made up by Victor Harapetian. So I'd like to, again, thank them for their hard work over the course of the year in going through this and making their recommendations. On August 22, 2023, three comprehensive reports detailing the rental rights program to the City Council were presented to the City Council, covering the program's status, marketing strategies, mediation options, and improvement recommendations. While the marketing strategies were well-received and approved, the proposed changes to the rental rights ordinance sparked discussion and requests for further clarification by City Council. On September 27, 2023, the ad hoc committee was convened one final time to address the feedback received from the City Council. Before you now is the recommendation of the committee, along with additional thoughts and recommendations, in answer to questions and ideas that the council had, has had since the completion of the committee's work, as well as some observations from staff since that time as well. I will add that there was not unanimity on the committee on all of the recommendations, but there was a, they were able to compromise, or they were able to move forward with their recommendations, which is what they were charged with. And some of the key issues and challenges that the committee had in looking at their recommendations were coming up in balancing landlord-tenant's rights, protection against substandard living conditions, looking at state laws and how they might impact any types of proposals, coming up with implementation and enforcement issues, and addressing adequate resources and support. And this is just a quick roadmap of what you're going to be looking at tonight. There are proposed revisions being offered. Those proposed revisions include the legislative purpose, the definitions, there are four definitions that are being proposed changed, base rent, qualified tenant, definition of rent, and rental unit, major rehab retroactive date, and there's an asterisk on the PowerPoint, that is one that came up after the completion of the work of the committee. Next is a requirement of offering of one-year lease, written leases, evictions, and evictions related to nuisance, major rehab, owner move-in. There will be a discussion of rent-based termination, and a discussion of required payment of relocation fee related to just cause eviction, and relocation assistance related to rent increases over 7% and the payment of the relocation payment. There are some additional proposed revisions. There are new sections, intentional disrepair and damage to rental units, and rent reduction and service reductions. And then with that, I will turn it over to Lucy Varpetian for her part of the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present. We're going to cover a very high-level description of each of the changes, not a line-by-line review of the committee's recommendations. The first is fairly straightforward. It's a change in the title to reflect the more current coverage of the entirety of the ordinance. The second is the legislative purpose. There is a change here from what was originally discussed with the stakeholders. There were some comments that we, as staff, took back and felt that it was more reflective of the current status quo, and so that you'll see an updated legislative purpose here. It's part of the packet. In the base rent section, this is consistent with what we have been discussing. The committee talked about splitting usage charges from, usage charges from reoccurring fees, things like parking and storage would still be considered as part of the base rent, but usage charges would be carved out. The idea of a qualified tenant, that came up several times during several sessions of the committee's work, came up very early on in June of 2022, then again in May of 2023, came up during council discussions back in August, and it also came up and was discussed during the very last meeting that we had with the committee. And so you'll see a, an additional definition in the definition section with regard to qualified tenants, some additional protections for individuals who are potentially more vulnerable in the community. The definition of rental units was amended. Here, two specific areas, the committee wanted to make sure that illegal units were definitely included as part of the protection process. We looked at the definition of a, the state law definition. Throughout the discussions, there were comments about mirroring state law, and in this particular example, with regard to duplexes, there's a specific definition in state law as to what is considered to be subject to the state law protections. And so you'll see that is also mirrored here in the, in state law. Section eight used to be exempt. It no longer is, mostly because of change in the status of the law. The issue with regard to major rehab retroactive date, there was an outdated section in the ordinance that was under point 022 that applied to the applicability of the ordinance. We removed that in its entirety and instead offered a potential solution to some of the comments that we were hearing from council with regard to the moratorium, and this perhaps addresses some of the concerns that council had, specifically to allow for that portion of the ordinance that deals with major rehab to have a retroactive date of October 1, 2023. The next section talks about the requirement of offering a one-year lease. Council asked for a very specific direction from the committee, and this is one where the committee, at its last meeting, had a discussion about what that would look like. And the recommendation was to reduce the number of advanced notice dates that the landlord had or the tenant had to accept, to accept the written lease. There was a, also in the context of discussing the offer of the one-year lease, there was discussion about removing the exemption that applied to triplexes and fourplexes. With regard to evictions, specifically the definition of nuisance, while there was one specific description that said included but not limited to, the committee felt that some additional broadening and discussion of that ordinance would be helpful, so that was incorporated. The section that dealt with major rehab, City of Glendale already had a provision that required any time, there was a capital improvement to the building that it be eight times, the value of the rehab be eight times the rent, that the unit be uninhabitable for a period of 30 days, and that along with the notice for vacate, the landlord also served certain specific requirements, like a copy of the permit, the work plan, the scope of work, et cetera. This particular change, and I limited to this particular change, was in direct response to the comments that we heard sometime in October and on November. This section now mirrors state law, with the exception of some additional comments we heard during stakeholder meetings, and specifically, the definition of substantial remodel now is almost identical to what state law requires, except that in order for it to truly be a major rehab, the amount of time that the unit must be uninhabitable was increased from 30 days to 90 days. And the additional comment that we received during the stakeholder meetings, both from the landlord representatives and tenant representatives, was that the value of the project should be either eight times the amount of the current rent or the fair market rent, whichever is greater. So that is also reflected in the ordinance. There was some discussion about workarounds with regard to owner move-ins. You'll see, again, this was a committee discussion and a committee approved change. The requirement would be that the family member, the qualifying family member, would need to move into the unit within two months, occupy the unit for a period of at least a year, and that one family member can be used for this particular purpose one time. Rent-based terminations, this was a, there was a, trying to simplify the issue of banking, and so now the look-back period is limited to only three years, and clarified to say that the right runs with the land so that the successor landlord would also have the benefit of that look-back. The required payment of the relocation fee, this was, again, at length discussed by committee members. Council at its August meeting asked for a very specific recommendation, so the committee discussed this and ultimately voted, a majority voted, to have the value of the relocation fee for just cause-related issues be three times the greater of the tenant's current monthly rent or the FMR for a comparable unit plus $2,000. The last time that that figure had been visited was back in 2003, and so the committee felt that this kept up with the times. Following up on council's suggestion with regard to here, qualified tenants would have some additional benefits in that their relocation values would be doubled. The other place where one can receive a relocation fee is in the context of a rent increase that's over 7%. And there, you may recall that there was a very complex formula based on income, number of years, number of unit size. The committee here felt specific that all of that was too complicated in that it should go back to three times the proposed rent, understanding that in certain circumstances, a tenant could have received up to six times the proposed rent, but in the interest, again, of compromise, I think when they gave on one area, the other side gave in this area. So again, just commenting on the complimentary work and the give-and-take of the committee. The discussion of the intentional disrepair, we received some feedback from council. This was discussed at the last September meeting with regard to the intentional disrepair and damage to the rental unit. In this area, the, it's a new section to the code, and essentially what this says is that if a landlord allows for slum conditions in the apartment, then the tenant should not be further compromised by continuing to live in the unit and then ultimately losing the unit because the landlord has intentionally allowed to the unit to fall into disrepair. And so in this particular area, there's some very specific language about how a tenant would be relocated temporarily and then given the right to return back into the unit. We did add last night, after we received some comments, some written comments, we did add one section to the ordinance that basically talked about a tenant providing notice of the, of the issue, allowing for reasonable opportunity to repair if the landlord does not independently become aware of what the situation is. Lastly, the very last slide, again, something that the committee discussed at length was this idea of a rent reduction if there was a decrease in the services that were allowed. The committee considered a number of options, anywhere from taking the, you know, someone who has two parking spaces and now they have only one for whatever reason. The complex used to have a pool and the landlord made the decision to fill it in. No laundry services, those types of permanent and significant decrease in the housing services. In this area, the committee collectively agreed that there should be that comparable decrease in the rent, but they directed staff to put language together, which we did. So with that, we conclude the presentation of the red lines. There are some other areas of consideration that could come into play. We can discuss those with you now, or we could discuss them, but they're not contingent on council taking action on this first section.
Okay. So the question is whether you would go through these now. I think, let's hold off on that, and if there's no objection from my colleagues, I'd like to first go to the speakers. We have a large number of people that would like to comment. How many calls do we have?
Mayor Brotman, currently, we have five callers.
Five? Okay. We probably have about 30 speakers, so I'm going to limit the speaking time to two minutes. I'm going to ask that you please, 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 don't repeat again what you've heard. You can just say, you know, I support the comments of somebody else if you do. We got a lot of emails and, you know, they were, most of them were essentially the same. So if it's really the same message, it doesn't, you don't need to go through the whole thing for us to know that you're here, to know what your position is. That's the important thing. And let's, given the number we have, now that we're starting public speaking, we'll cut off additional calls, and we'll just take what we have here, or additional cards. If everybody who wants to speak, I'll give, I'll give five minutes, let's say five minutes, for people to put in a card if you haven't already, or for somebody to get on the phone if they haven't already. Let's just drop it after five minutes, okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I just clarify something? So thank you for the presentation. I have a feeling there may be some folks wishing to speak to an eviction moratorium. Would those comments be germane at this time? Because we haven't talked about an eviction moratorium yet. We have, you know, all these changes. Is that something that, that we'll take at this time?
Because I raised it last time and asked that it be included in our discussion today, so I would guess that the answer is, it is germane, but.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. So as part of the report, as part, as we were preparing, as staff was preparing the report, you asked that that be addressed in the report. It is, my understanding, so it certainly, obviously, the council can't initiate or cannot tonight adopt or introduce a moratorium. That's not the ordinance before you. The revisions to Title IX are what's before you, but if the council wants to direct us at the end of the discussion to bring back a moratorium, then you can do that, and we'll bring that back. But the actual, in terms of if people want to speak on it, it's part of the report, so it was anticipated we'd be hearing about it tonight.
And just so I'm clear, it was eviction moratorium for major rehab.
Just for major rehab, yes. And so it's a good point, if that's the issue, you know, people want to speak on that, yeah, just make that clear. If you have other things that you want to comment on, as far as, you know, some of the other recommendations, also, you know, make it clear what it is you want to talk about.
May I ask, how many representatives or individuals who served on the ad hoc committee are present here? Okay, we have one, two, three, four. And how many of those, and they served on the ad hoc committee, how many of them have submitted cards to speak? Two of them have. I would like to ask that those who are on the ad hoc committee be given at least, instead of two minutes, perhaps three or four minutes, I'd like to hear their comments specific because I think that they have some more insight into how we got here and what's before council to consider.
Yeah, you can do that, especially since they're part of the committee that you directed be created, and it's almost an extension of staff.
Okay. Well, let's say, let's say three minutes. We've got, we've got a lot of, a lot of people here. Okay, so we'll start off with Jana Aziz. Okay, so we'll start off with Jeanne Aziz.
Mayor, that would be two minutes, correct?
That's fine.
Two minutes, yes. And you'll be followed by Adora Beal. I'm going to just say who's coming next so that that person can get ready.
Sure. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council. My name is Jeanne Aziz. I am a landlord-tenant attorney. I'm based out of La Corte Center, California. I've also been part of the Armenian Bar Association Probono Committee that has helped hundreds of the City of Glendale tenants, as well as landlords at times. In my private practice, I primarily practice in landlord-tenant law. I've represented both landlords and tenants, but I will say, over the last five to seven years, essentially exclusively tenants. When listening to the comments that you will hear tonight, I'm going to urge the committee to remember what the legislative purpose of this ordinance is. Ms. Varpetin did reference that it has been somewhat amended, however, the primary purpose still looks to provide stable housing in the City of Glendale and to prevent displacements of its citizens. Over the last six months, my office has seen an exponential increase in tenants' calling regarding mass evictions or has been deemed rent evictions. And we're talking about citizens of Glendale that have lived in their units for decades, many of them older citizens that are living on a fixed income. These people are barely putting together the funds to hire me to even try to prevent or even buy them some additional time in these evictions, let alone face the prospect of moving to another unit in the City of Glendale, paying probably three to four times the amount of rent that they've been paying for 20 years. The way the ordinance is currently written, and we did go over it extensively, I won't repeat that, we have many speakers, it is a lot more forgiving than the state law, and with updating the ordinance to be in more in line with the state law, we are actually now striking a better balance between the landlords and with the tenants. The current way that it's written allows for cosmetic renovations, and even with an eight times the current rental amount threshold for construction, when this ordinance was written in 2019, construction costs were not as high. Now they're...
Your time is up. Sorry, your time is up. Okay, Adora Beal, and you're followed by Henry Mantel.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and City Council members. My name is Adora Beal. I'm a lifelong member of Glendale. I am a realtor and I am a renter. I'm speaking to you this evening as a private citizen, not on behalf of the Glendale Association of Realtors, but I will be referring to them in my comments. I'm here this evening to express my strong opposition to the proposed moratorium on evictions due to substantial renovations. With our aging stock, it could push owners to sell to corporations and risk reduced affordability and availability. This is a cause of great concern to me, not because it's a matter of very bad timing relative to greatly reduced number of housing inventory for both sales and rental units, but because of the far-reaching implications it may have on other segments of the rental market, real estate market, specifically, single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes that might be included in the moratorium. This proposed moratorium has trouble written all over it. This is not the correct solution for this problem, and I'm asking you to please not proceed down this road. Take advantage of your valuable resources in this city, specifically, the Glendale Association of Realtors. We've shared a long and collaborative relationship with this city, and we would love to help you come to a solution and help you find a resolution that's amicable to all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Henry Mantel, followed by David Kishian? Not sure.
Good evening, Glendale City Council. My name is Henry Mantel. I am a former eviction defense attorney, current pro bono coordinator for Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County. I was invited by staff of the Housing and Community Development Departments to comment on this legislation. I met with them in person or privately over Zoom and discussed kind of what was going on, and I think there are a lot of parts of this ordinance that are great. I particularly appreciate the temporary relocation assistance requirements. I appreciate rent reductions for service reductions, and I especially request, or especially appreciate the requiring that substantial remodels take 90 days instead of 30. I've seen that 30-day requirement get abused a lot by landlords, so increasing that, I think, is the right thing to do. There's one in particular instance, there was an earlier draft of this ordinance that removed Section B.3 from the eviction, section on evictions, and this was a requirement that required all changes in a lease term to be in writing, signed by both the landlord and the tenant. That was removed in this current draft. I think it should be put back in. I realize, when I commented on this, when I met with the staff, I kind of waffled on it, I realized that there, now that I think it would be better to be put back in because I think this is an issue in which tenants are particularly vulnerable in. And any changes to a lease should be made in writing. And I just want to say, I am in support of this in general, just because it does make the law clearer and making it easier for tenants to understand their rights is a huge boon to them, particularly when, in LA County, 90% of landlords are represented by attorneys in eviction court, whereas only 10% of tenants are. So anything that makes tenants' rights clearer, I think, helps in the long run. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is David, I'm sorry, Kai Shian?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Followed by Susan Brusalian.
Good evening, David Kai Shian, representing the Apartment Associations of Greater Los Angeles. We are shocked and dismayed by the sheer volume of new concepts contained in this revision created by city staff that were never discussed or agreed to by the ad hoc committee, as well as some that are completely contrary to what the committee did agree on. Most egregious change by staff being the total elimination of a carve-out for mom-and-pop owners, which the committee clearly agreed to maintain. With the astronomical increase of relocation fees to six months' worth of rent plus an additional $4,000, small owners will be financially prohibited from making needed major repairs to their older building and be forced to sell their properties, as is to large corporations, for demolition and replacement with luxury apartments. Glendale does not need more luxury unit. It needs more affordable rental housing that small owners are providing. We urge the City Council to not only reinstate the existing carve-out, but expand it to include all non-corporate owners, including mom-and-pops and limited liability companies used by them for risk-management purposes. Additionally, these new provisions drastically increase the complication of the existing ordinance by creating a new classification of qualified tenants. This new category includes so many groups of renters that it now swallows the entire ordinance. They include all renters with minor children, which was never discussed by the committee, all low-income renters, all senior renters 62 years or older, and disabled renters. Thus, only a small minority of renters will not fall into at least one of these new groups and receive double the amount of relocation fees that are already, that are already owners to be able to stay in business when major repairs are needed or when they need to move into their own building to make ends meet. We urge the City Council to send this draft back to the ad hoc committee for consideration, refinement, and clearly delineated consensus positions. We also urge the City Council to direct the ad hoc committee to hold open meetings for full participation by the entire committee on these substantial revisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Susan Brusalian, followed by Ira Bland, I think that is.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Susan Brusalian. I'm here to speak as a real estate broker in the city for over 35 years. I also strongly oppose the eviction moratorium regarding substandard housing needed for major renovations. It's deeply concerning due to the current housing shortages and will also affect duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and single-family homes, given someone owns more than one of these property types, and renting them all out. This will gravely impact both renters and sellers. The property at 332 Lomita is an isolated problem and doesn't warrant a city-wide moratorium. Let's prioritize safe housing without burdening property owners who have worked so hard to purchase their investment properties, especially small-scale mom-and-pop owners, many of whom don't raise their rents too high on their tenants in the first place, and will affect our local businesses. This proposal risks permanently damaging our city's stellar reputation as the jewel city by letting properties that need urgent repair become dilapidated. Thank you in advance for not going forward with this proposal.
Okay, Ira Bland, followed by Jen Rosser.
Good evening, Mayor, and council and staff. My name is Ira Bland. I'm a real estate licensee. I happen to be a member of the Glendale Association of Realtors, but I'm here acting in my own self-capacity, not representing the association. When I learned about this and the moratorium specifically, I felt it was, it is a knee-jerk reaction to a problem that is probably pretty small, and because of that, I would encourage that we don't go forward with it without having more analysis of the number of properties that might be impacted by it. I'm certainly all in favor of protection rights for tenants, but, you know, landlords also have issues to deal with, and I think they need to be protected as well. So my encouragement is that the council does not go forward with any kind of moratorium at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jen Rosser, and followed by Grace Brands.
I had a PowerPoint of some photos I wanted to show you, but they're...
Jen, I have it.
Oh, great, great. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, City Council members. My name is Jen Rosser. I've been a renter in Glendale for eight years. As mentioned over the past few weeks, my experience with the no-fault, just-cause for evictions has been very stressful and challenging. This topic is very nebulous and very hard to fully quantify. Because of this, we spent dozens of hours with a software engineer to analyze permits from the Glendale website to see what the data could tell us. To say it was difficult would be an understatement. In the end, we found about 300 multifamily permits filed since 2019 that fit the modus operandi of a rent eviction. But even that data is flawed. It's hard to tell how many families were affected, since many permits were pooled for work being done on multiple units instead of a single permit per unit. Other cities require landlords to file 60-day notices to vacate with the city in addition to serving their tenants, so that there is a record should the notice turn into an eviction. If we knew this data, we may be able to estimate the human cost of the tenants who have been forced to leave Glendale. In the absence of this concrete data, I wanted to show a real example, that of my own apartment, which has been slated for extensive renovations since February of this year. You can go to the next slide. That's my dog. This is the main room, and it has wood floors. The next slide. This is my kitchen, which is outfitted with well-maintained butcher block counters, a convection oven, and a dishwasher. In the next slide, you'll see the two bedrooms have carpet that is less than three years old, and on the next slide, you'll see that both bathrooms are full bathrooms with functional sinks, toilets, and shower tubs. But here is my unit. Does it need to be renovated? Do I need to move out and return at a 30% higher rent as my landlord has asked me to do? Looking at my unit, it's hard to see any justification for renovation other than this, an excuse to subvert the rent control and raise the rent. I strongly support the changes in this ordinance as agreed by the members of this hard-working committee. If we cannot pass this ordinance, then we need more time to review the law. I urge you to institute a moratorium on just-cause evictions for renovations that will prevent further displacement and hardship for the 70% of renters in Glendale. Thank you so much for listening to our stories.
Thank you. Grace Brands, followed by Sevex Sorabian.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I hope everyone had a great, long holiday weekend. Tonight, I want to focus on a few quick points. Without proper enforcement, many of these changes will not achieve their intended goals. It's important, again, to note for this entire room, that the initial notice to vacate that is served, not the unlawful detainer, is not reported to the City of Glendale. The city lacks this information on how many of the roughly 7,200 permits applied for this year were actually used as part of a notice, or if notices were issued without curves and work schedules. To address this, points D. and H., under the other avenues and ideas, they make sense to include. Administrative fines are a great start, but at 400, 1,000, 4,000 for first, second, third notices, that could just be the cost of doing business. I mean, is the fourth one free? Things like designating eviction-related permits and requiring notice filing are sensible steps to prevent system abuse. I understand the need to support property owners who genuinely need to vacate for essential renovations like hazmat abatement. However, when it leads to permanent displacement for no-fault tenants, it's fair to ask for some extra checks and balances. My permanent piece is, the permanent piece is important. If it's fairly easy to pull these permits, and if these permits are supposedly significant enough to evict no-fault tenants, why can't they be significant enough for a brief plan check or someone at the city to take a closer look? If the City of Glendale isn't the authority on the ordinance it created, and it takes pride in, who is? Going forward, I would like to see more language about no-fault tenants being allowed to return after renovations. A moratorium would be great, but at the very least, let's get the relocation passed and move on from 2003. This should be effective immediately, as far as a retroactive period to be effective for several of the ongoing cases recently discussed here. Let's take action tonight, not next week, not next year. Thank you.
Set up Sorabian, followed by Mr. Moratorium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Sevax Sorabian. I'm a resident of Glendale and a real estate agent for over 35 years. A moratorium for renovation-cause evictions is gonna exasperate the existing quality of the buildings in the City of Glendale. If you take a look at the data available, you'll see that the median year built for our structures go back to 1950, 1940. All right? They are over 70 years old. That's the median. These buildings need to be renovated. At the same time, we get, in the proposed staff report, pointers in regards to people intentionally leaving their properties to dismay. If these people cannot build and fix their units when they have the financial ability to do so, and then we hold them also and charge them with the fact that, oh, your building is not up to date, what is that gonna do? This is a contradictory policy term and implementation. The two-to-four-unit owners do not have the means to do the fixes anytime that they want to. They do have financial responsibilities, just like all of us. They put together the money to fix it when they can't fix it, and then we tell them, don't do this because there is a moratorium. This is not gonna work right. We have over 5,784 buildings in our city that are multi-residential. Two out of that does not give us cause to fix the whole thing. Thank you.
Victor Herrapiti, followed by Eddie Moxley.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and City Council, city staff. My name is Victor Herrapiti, and I am one of the committee members on the Landlord Ad Hoc Committee. I was identified as the neutral. A little bit about my past, I've been an attorney for about 30 years. I've represented both landlords and tenants. I've gone to jury trial with tenants. I have taken cases, essentially, without charging certain tenants, so I've gone all the way. I understand the dimensions involved. I was originally part of the Glendale Housing Rules Committee in the early 2000s. I have been contacted by judges that are actively on the bench that have cases before them when they need assistance on interpreting certain provisions of the Glendale ordinance in the past. I was hopeful that my experience and my background, and I would guesstimate with these types of matters, I've probably done a little over 10,000, that with my experience and background, that we would be able to reach a consensus, that someone would also listen to me, as I would love to listen to my fellow committee members. I recognize some of them are here, and I value their opinions greatly. As Mr. Zovak said, we sat there for over a year. As I stand here before you, I know I have a limited amount of time, though, as a committee member, I believe I was going to be afforded a little bit extra time. I find it a little offensive that myself and my committee members were not presented with tonight's documents for formal discussion as a committee. I sat where you folks are sitting. I think that we should be afforded the right to discuss this. I find it appalling that we were not given this, to give that opportunity. That is not part of our assignment, or our charge, as it was called, that we are to come back with the committee, especially when there is constant reference to language that's new. to language that's new. A lot of the language and some of the idea with regards to reduction in services and stuff like that that has been presented, I am gonna boast about myself a little bit. I probably talk the most during the committee, but I think what I've tried to do is to offer my experience so that we can have a balanced and simple approach with how landlords and tenants get along. State law has various provisions today that did not exist years ago. You're gonna have bad landlords. You're gonna have bad tenants. We cannot solve every problem, but it has to be sensible, and it has to allow people to work themselves, have the people, allow them to work their problems out themselves. I absolutely believe when there were suggestions that were made, I originally, in 2002, was the one that proposed relocation as part of the exchange for the exemption that existed at the time. At that time, I proposed a formula that would be sensible so that it would keep up to date. That was ignored. I would urge you not to make any rash, immediate decisions. Obviously, there are concerns here that both sides need to still continue to address. Otherwise, if we're just gonna pass this tonight, then I'd like to take this moment to apologize to my 11-year-old son, who went to sleep at nights while I sat here thinking that I was actually trying to do something to help. Because otherwise, I would have rather been in the bed with him as he's hugging his stuffed animals, because that would be far more important to me than to see something like this just go flying through. In the past, Dave Weaver said, we're gonna pass it. We can tinker with it later. That's not how we legislate. I think let's do this so that people don't have these types of confrontations.
So can I ask one question to the speaker since he was on the committee? So the issue that was brought earlier by the speakers who showed the slides of their apartment and the evictions, I mean, as someone who's represented tenants and landlords, I mean, how do you propose to address an issue like that, which on the surface seems pretty unfair and unjustified to remove folks from a location for something like that? And I understand we're only getting one part of it. We're not seeing both sides, but...
Great question. So the question now becomes a balanced approach. There's the emphasis of trying to have quality housing. Again, we have to consider that this is the city of Glendale, and we want to maintain the standards that have been historically present in the city. Secondly, you have to understand, and we have to look at, what is being done and how it's being done. This is the first time, with all the time we've spent over a year, that the word "moratorium" as to relocation eviction has come up. The termination that we have with qualified tenant to this extent, this is the first time this has come up. Again, as a committee, I think we should have a discussion. One of the committee members, who was a landlord, passed away. That person should have been replaced. Votes were taken with other committee members absent, including other landlord members. Again, some of the language with regards to reduction in services, I propose because landlords are unfairly retaliating against tenants for speaking of their rights. Okay? That is not appropriate. But clearly, I can tell you that some of the language that's in here is going to create more confrontation. When it says that there is a reduction in services, then we can define, we define parking, pets. We have to get specific folks. Because if there's just failure to maintain, well, what does that mean? So the idea here is renewal, there was a couple of big-ticket items, renewal of leases, eviction grounds, relocation. What do we do to bring that up to date? All of this stuff was the main topic items that we needed to address. I think that if this ordinance had been presented to me while I sat there as a committee member, I guarantee you that this conference would go until probably 11 o'clock at night. Because this has to be ironed out. I don't want people coming to see me as a landlord or as a tenant lawyer. They should be able to work this amongst themselves. And people have the right to have good housing. We've talked about people that are elderly, people that have terminable conditions. It's not fair to give them a 60-day notice. You should give them more time. But at some point in time, without a finish line, these are relationships. Every year, we hear about a proposed increase, and we follow with that.
Thank you.
I have a question. I just have a question. So the whole qualified tenant didn't get discussed?
We've talked about different options. We've talked about the definitions that are used. Qualified tenant, by the way, incorporates California Health and Safety Code, which talks about a difficulty with mobility. There isn't one landlord I've represented that has not paid the full relocation amount in the rent control jurisdictions, and there isn't one tenant that I've represented that I have not been able to collect the full amount of a qualified tenant. Because a difficulty with mobility, if I bang my knee into this podium right now and I get a doctor that says I'm having problems, that's it, I qualify. The definitions that are being used just because it refers to a California statute does not mean that that's sensible for the city of Glendale. Again, we've talked about increased time periods. We said, give them 180 days.
Mayor, I apologize for that. So that's not response to the question.
Okay. Thank you very much.
After all the speakers, we can have staff respond to some of the issues raised by the committee member.
Just in regard to the discussion about qualified tenant, because this has raised some issues with stakeholders, we did go back and looked at our notes. That, the idea of the qualified tenants came up at the June 2022 meeting, came up in May 2023 meeting, came up during the council meeting in August of 2023, and then we also discussed it at the final meeting that we had, which was at the June meeting. Now, different theories came up and different conversations were had throughout, but at least at those meetings, those meetings are public, their video is available online. We can view that. So the idea of a qualified tenant did come up multiple times, and there were definitions that we looked at or considered, and we tried to make it as simple as we could by tying it into existing state law or federal law with regard to, for example, the 62, the age limit of 62. So it wasn't something that just came up in the last two weeks. It was something that had been discussed by the committee over an extended period of time.
Thank you.
Followed by Greg Alexanian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and member of council. My name is Eddie Minassian. I'm a real estate broker in Glendale. I pretty much grew up in Glendale. What I encourage you to do is to keep in place the 30-days renovation time as establishing ordinance since 2019, and protect the missing middle, which means the housing providers that they own one-to-four-unit units in Glendale, they need to be exempt from the rental rights ordinance, especially if unit is owner-occupied. The 60-day notice for the, minimum notice for the renovation, it's not fair to the homeowners, and I think it's good to just not change the current ordinance that was passed in 2019. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Greg Alexanian, followed by Patrick McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I thought it was nice to be here, sitting, to hear about the Glendale Water Power necessity to raise rates because they're having an inability to cover their costs and for other reasons, as such as a lot of landlords are dealing with right now. My name is Greg Alexanian. Between my father and I, in the last 35 years, we've represented over 3,300 apartment units in the sale, Glendale and Burbank, but primarily Glendale and strictly apartments. So I want to offer some statistics to help with staff as well that I think should encompass some considerations. Over the last five years in the city of Glendale, there have been 302 transactions of apartment buildings. This is five units and up. That's what I track. Five units and up, 300 transactions, which consisted of 5,576 units being transferred over. Where is the systemic problem in these five years? Of 5,000 households have changed, but we're hearing about certain isolated issues, and we want to put a blanket coverage on something for an isolated case. I was at lunch today with an owner who owns seven buildings in Glendale. He has some friends out in New York, which has the hardest legislation, and it said that those values have lowered by over 40%. And they're having to bring money to the table to not lose their properties. Pasadena enacted some of the worst legislation, and we're seeing a skyrocketing amount of properties hit the market, over 40 buildings right now. Look, as a broker, I love it. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna do more business. But as somebody who's supposed to make policy, this is not the right angle to go. You have to consider all options. And what's gonna happen is you put a blank, if you put a word like "moratorium" in Glendale, you're gonna see the same thing happening. You see more transactions, people wanting to exit this market. I had a call today, actually, no, last week, from an owner who lives in San Francisco, hasn't raised rents in 11 years, asking me, how am I supposed to raise rents? And to answer already some of your questions...
Your time is up.
I think you have to look at some of these inhabitable conditions, some of these tenants are not warning their landlords about.
Excuse me.
And then when the rents are being adjusted to market, they don't wanna...
Patrick McCarthy, followed by Albert Hieropetian.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. I would ask you to reconsider this ordinance. As a resident of Glendale for the past three years and currently a renter, I think the ordinance is flawed. I believe it is the potential to worsen the availability of rental accommodation by discouraging ongoing upgrade and maintenance of properties and forcing small landlords out of the market. I acknowledge that there is a shortage of rental accommodation in Glendale and probably throughout Los Angeles. But the problem is a supply problem. And I believe this ordinance will lead to landlords exiting the market, which may be positive for buyers, but no help for renters. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Hieropetian will be followed by Varuj Bezarianz. I got that right, I hope.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Albert Hieropetian. I'm here as a real estate broker, a real estate investor, as well as a resident and someone who's worked in Glendale for almost 50 years now. There was a lady that just came up earlier with that red-checkered shirt, showed her cute-looking apartment with a dog. Beautiful building. One thing she failed to show you guys was the electrical, the roof, the soft story, and some of these other things that us landlords have to get taken care of. For those that may or may not be aware, there's, the cost for insurance has skyrocketed, almost impossible to get, especially with buildings that are 1950s or 1960s. Soft story is becoming an issue with a lot of insurance companies and lenders, and they're making you change those parkings to allow for seismic retrofit. I personally have gone ahead and done four of them in the last year, and it costs a fortune. These are things that ownership has to get taken care of. If we don't, you're gonna have substandard properties out there, and the city's gonna fall apart. I think the state has enacted a very reasonable bill, and I think we should adhere to it. It's working fine. We're communicating with their tenants. We're actually helping them relocate to other properties when it comes time to relocate, and it's working just fine. There are slumlords out there. They're taking advantage of the system, and they're abusing it. Us landlords should not get punished because of those people. We know how to work with these people. We treat them like family, and everyone is nice to us as well. So please take that into consideration and do not enact this thing that they're trying to do as far as the moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, Varuj Bezarianz. Hope I got that right, followed by Ramela Iraghi.
I'm a mayor and council member and staff. My name is Varuj Bezarianz. And I'm a realtor from Glendale. My office is in Glendale. I just wanted to say that I'm opposing this moratorium. However, my colleagues, I already talked all the reason about why we're opposing this. So that's my, keeping short. Thank you. I would like to give my difference of the time to Mr. Greg Asturian to talk. If he has three minutes, he will give like five to six minutes. Thank you very much.
Well, okay. Ramela Iraghi, and after you will be Margaret Cashian.
Hi, everybody. I'm a resident of the city of Glendale for 30 years. I'm a senior citizen, and I believe that major solution to this housing crisis is affordable housing. We need more, the city builds more affordable housing. Well, that's the major message that I have for this council. Now, I'm gonna put this aside, and actually, this renters program, which I believe it's got a lot of flaws, and the reason, the major problem with this renters' rights is 7% increase or you have a right to lease. This is not gonna work at all. I was against it from the beginning when they proposed this, this ordinance. Yeah, as I said, we need rent control for this city, not this bogus renters' rights or whatever. Yeah, I wanna say Mr. Sepan. Yeah, I already know that. I'm activist, I'm an affordable housing advocate. And this man was the reason that it became one. Just because you deny 300 renter assistance to me and my husband the time that I need to be...
Okay, Mr. Rock. Excuse me.
And my husband passed away.
Excuse me, you're addressing the council? So please address us.
No, I don't think so. This is in regards to renters' rights that it's comprised by...
No, when you're here, when you're here at the podium, you have to be addressing the council, not staff.
Yeah, okay, all right. And when it comes to renovation, I believe that renovations are illegal and are unconstitutional.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't have time to prove that. The next time, I'm gonna talk about it.
Our next speaker is Margaret Cashian? I hope I got that right, followed by Vahe Saghian.
Good evening. I strongly oppose the proposed moratorium on evictions due to substantial renovations. It's important to have quality housing, stable housing. This proposed moratorium puts the burden on private property owners to subsidize the housing for other private individuals. It seems more attractive and easier to make modifications to the municipal code, which forces private property owners to absorb losses and be financially impacted. The language in the proposal is overreaching. It cannot be passed tonight because there are so many items mixed in that need further discussion. Anyone in favor, this moratorium most likely is in favor of there being more affordable housing options available to them. It doesn't feel like enough energy and time has been put into creating new housing, which is something both sides of the argument can agree upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Vahe Saghian, followed by Arin Garibian.
Good evening, mayors and council members and city staff. My name is Vahe Saghian. I'm the local real estate agent. I'm speaking on my behalf, not any organization, and I urge you not to making an emotional decision for this moratorium for substantial renovations. Because what I just heard, that Victor Hieropetian mentioned that he was part of the committee, and he didn't have the detailed information. I will not repeat everything else. I agree with Adora. I agree with David, and I wanted to give my extra time to Greg Asturian. But I will urge you to not voting it emotionally, to making a decision that will impacting the Glendale city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Arin Garibian, and next will be Armin Avedian. Avedian, sorry.
Hello, Mayor and council members.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Arin Garibian, and I'm a Realtor in the city of Glendale. I represent housing providers who take pride in providing safe housing for tenants and their families. As you're aware, as others have mentioned, such as Albert, that buildings built previously in Glendale with materials back in the 60s, 40s, 50s would probably not be passing code today, which involves asbestos and HVAC and such like that. So when I see landlords are trying to actually provide more safe housing by making these necessary repairs, despite barely scraping by and, you know, oppressing his mom and pop landlords. I support the existing housing policies that the state has provided. I feel like they've thoroughly looked at everything with a fine-tooth comb, and I think the policies in place do help support and provide more stable housing in the city of Glendale. If I do have any extra time, I would like to provide to Greg Astorion. Thank you.
Armin Avedian, followed by Greg Astorion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Armin Avedian. I'm speaking today purely as a resident of Glendale for 40 years. I am holding a neutral position, so I am an investor who owns two individual units, so this moratorium would not affect me. I have a daughter who independently is a tenant. I have a mother-in-law who's a tenant. I have a sister-in-law who is a tenant, so I can see both sides of this argument. I see the tenant's side. I see the landlord's side. This moratorium makes absolutely no sense. There are a couple of units which are affected, a couple of buildings, out of 5,000 possible rental units in Glendale. So how could we make a decision? Because those numbers just absolutely do not make sense. The ad hoc committee, who is supposed to be advising you guys on this, does not seem to know what is going on. Staff, to the best of my knowledge, is not recommending this moratorium. Burbank had a similar situation, and they shuffled some money around, and they found some money to actually help out those people being relocated. We fought for Measure S. We passed it. There's funds available in Measure S. Perhaps if you want to help the tenants who are being relocated, perhaps some funds can be allocated out of the Measure S and help those tenants out. This moratorium makes absolutely no sense. If there was a mosquito flying in your living room, you would not take a bazooka and shoot it down. That's how bizarre and illogical this moratorium is. I think we need to study it more. We need to, you know, come up with something definitely better than what there is. So I urge you to just reject this moratorium, and let's come up with something better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg Astorion, followed by Dulce Andres.
My name is Greg Astorion. I represent Glendale Association of Realtors. I'm going to be addressing three things only, and three things only. Number one, we oppose the moratorium because it is affecting a building or two and putting in a moratorium on the entire city just because of two buildings. And by the way, we are for helping and providing relief to the tenants of the affected units, right? However, I don't believe that the housing providers have to be the only party carrying the burden. The city of Glendale has got the resources. In fact, we would love to hear what kind of help you have provided to the Linden and/or Lomita properties and how successful you've been. The community deserves to know that. Having said that, two other comments. Number one, when we, and it was we, that suggested that the eight months the eight months' worth of rent to be the measure in order to approve a renovation moratorium would suggest that with the understanding of keeping the 30 days intact, as opposed to the 60 days that is being proposed. So we would suggest for you to revisit that, and we will encourage you to change it back. Third, and the final, mom and pop owners, the housing providers, I'm talking about the two, three, and four-unit buildings. You have right now in your code a two-unit building to have, must be occupied by an owner for one unit to be able to qualify to not to be part of or be exempted from the rental rights program. You should do the same thing for the three and the four units. If a three-unit owner, and the owner of three-unit building lives in one of the units, extend that courtesy to him, right? And the same thing for the four units. Thank you. I didn't need any more than two minutes. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Dulce Andres, followed by Celeste Tovar.
Thank you. Landlords and tenants exist in worlds so far apart from each other. When myself and fellow Glendale tenant union members reviewed the updated draft, we were actually disappointed with the changes. I want you all to ban rent evictions, do the moratorium, realize that you all are creating a housing shortage by constantly evicting tenants. The tenants in Lomita and the fellow tenants who are here today are not isolated. Tenants right now are receiving notices with no permits and with no relocation assistance attached to it. And people such as the city attorney and other members of the city council are aware of this. If we can't get a moratorium, and if you can't do a ban on rent evictions, then I will accept the bare minimum of a higher relocation assistance and the inclusion of qualified tenants. And to me, it's really amazing to see landlords cry over the bare minimum when the city already favors them so much by one, not enforcing the laws. Constantly, the legislative purpose uses simply the words "encourage." And I already got an explanation as to why they can only do that. But no landlords that you are so lucky to live in a city that favors you so much. And you know what's funny? There are so many evictions related to renovations here in the city of Glendale that tenants and landlords alike created the word "rent evictions" to shorten it. That's how much this is a big problem, that you could just get two little words and then squish them together. Rent evictions are still happening, and they need to be banned by the city of Glendale. And I propose for you all to look more thoroughly at South Pasadena's laws and pass a moratorium and come to that conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Celeste Tovar, followed by, I only have a first name, Victor.
Hi, good evening. My name's Celeste. I'm a member of the Glendale Tenants Union, and I support a moratorium on rent evictions, and I also support Dulce's argument for banning rent evictions. So a big thing, like has been said, is, you know, the city's encouraging landlords to provide safe and stable housing, but landlords are constantly issuing unlawful evictions, so encouragement language does nothing to protect tenants. And also, a big point tenants have been talking about right now is it's the holidays. And holidays are coming up. It's getting darker earlier. Weather is getting colder, and people facing rent evictions are at high risk of being houseless, harmed, and even killed by the conditions imposed on them by greedy landlords who value their own monetary profit over human life. There are landlords and realtors here who are trying to play the victim, and they are far from that. Victims would be those made houseless by greedy people who hoard property and charge people for the basic human right of housing instead of getting a real job. And another point I want to bring up is someone mentioned high owner insurance and property cost, and that really is not the tenant's fault. That's an issue between you as a landlord and the city. So be angry at the city, and tenants should not face the consequences. And if your landlord job puts you in a precarious position, you should get a new one. That's all. Moratorium on rent evictions, ban rent evictions.
Okay, Victor, only a first name. Is there a Victor? Yes, there we go. Followed by, I think it's Mara Padilla.
Hola, buenas noches, señores. Gracias por permitirme estar esta noche con ustedes. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight with you. Tengo una situación crítica que tengo una orden de desalojo de 60 días en la cual pues yo soy padre de una niña menor de siete años que tiene una discapacidad y la mamá igualmente. I have a critical situation where I have a notice of, 60-day notice of eviction. I have a daughter that is seven years old. He's handicapped, and also my wife is in the same situation. He ido aquí a la ciudad de Glendale de... I've gone to the city of Glendale. Y me dice que el dueño tiene la razón, ¿verdad? Pero yo no veo cuál es la razón de desalojarme con mi familia discapacitada. I've gone to the city of Glendale, and they've told me that the landlord is right in doing so, but I don't understand the reason for being evicted with my handicapped family. Yo le he pagado todos los veces de renta y mi edificio ella no lo arregla. Hay muchos problemas en mi unidad. I have paid all my months of rent, and I don't see the reason. There's a lot of problems in my housing. Pero ella no le interesa, así que necesito ayuda, por favor. But my landlord hasn't repaired anything, and she doesn't care. I need your help, please. Por eso estoy apoyando a la renovación. That's why I support no rent evictions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, what did we have? Mara Padilla, right. And then after that, Leana?
Maria Padilla.
Yeah, Maria Padilla, and then I have a Leana, and I can't make out the name. Sorry.
Okay, buenas noches a todos.
Good evening to everybody.
Mi nombre es María Padilla, y vengo aquí a poner mi caso. Estoy para la próxima semana en desalojo. Hay muchos desalojos aquí que yo quisiera el apoyo de ustedes para que paren con esto porque decimos que hay mucho indigente y vamos a ver más.
I'm here to talk to you. I'm on an eviction. It's going to happen next week. And there's a lot of these evictions around here, and there's a lot of people who are going to be pushed out, and there's a lot of people on the streets, and there's going to be more.
Y también quería decirles que hay muchas personas mayores aquí en la audiencia también que van a ser desalojadas. O sea, no hay respeto, no se mira ni raza, ni color, ni nada. Yo los invito a que caminen aquí a la brand y vean a mucha gente armenia enferma y vive en las calles. ¿Por qué? Porque el dueño ha decidido sacarnos cuando siempre uno está pagando la renta.
There is no respect for race, color, or anything. There is many people here in the audience that are older people. And also, I would like you to, welcome brand. There's many people from different countries, from different nationalities. And there's a lot of Armenians that are people living on the street because they cannot afford the rent. We need you to help us.
Yeah, yo les pido el apoyo de ellos, no solamente cuando piden el voto de nosotros, sino que también apoyen a esa gente mayor porque puede ser alguien cercano a ustedes. Todos vamos para viejos.
I'm asking you for your support, not just because of us, because it could be someone that is close to you, someone older people. So don't come to us only when you need the votes. Come here to help us because there's many people that are going to need your help.
Thank you. Leana, maybe Paronekian? And that followed by Dari Zargarian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Again, I am represented in Lomita apartments and 15 families, as you know already. We want to thank you first that you have been working with us in assisting with our eviction notices. By the way, we got the fourth one. I don't know if does it make sense. They're just adding one sheet to fix it. So tonight, we gathered here again to support the moratorium ordinance, and we want just to make sure that our building is included in it or not. Please. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Dari Zargarian, and my last card says Alex.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is David Zargarian. I am, well, I was a member of the landlord-tenant commission. I was representing the tenants. Let me just start by thanking staff for their tireless work in preparing this ordinance. Throughout the year, year and a half about that it took us to have these fair and open meetings that, you know, the public was encouraged by, you know, multiple people, staff, everyone was encouraged to come out and provide their opinions, and their opinions were provided throughout this process. I believe the most contentious part about our meetings, which were generally cordial, and, you know, we went back and forth on a lot of issues, but the most contentious part, I believe, was obviously the relocation fees. You know, nobody throughout the process is arguing that there should not be any type of increase in rent. I think a reasonable person would argue and would recognize that costs have gone up across the board. There's a few truths. It's true that, you know, rental costs have gone up, and, you know, we have to balance that as policymakers. It's true that, you know, the cost to service buildings and, you know, provide a new roof, whatever it may be, have gone up, and we have to take those, you know, those items into consideration. It's also true that, you know, these apartment buildings and generally housing has substantially increased in equity. It is also true that many landlords are using, you know, specific statutory schemes, if you want to call it that, maybe loopholes, to kick out tenants in order to take advantage of that equity. There are four areas where relocation fee comes into play.
I'll give you extra time because you were on the commission, so.
Right. There are four areas where relocation fee comes into play. When landlords have good faith, when landlords want to take good faith recovery to demolish or remodel the units. When landlords have, you know, want to take in good faith to be, you know, resident manager, to place a resident manager into the building or some sort of family member into the building. And then there are two additional, when they want to remove the rental unit permanently or when there's a government order. We have to kind of look at that remodel and when family and/or, you know, they want to remove it to have, you know, some sort of resident manager or family come in into those units. Those, I think those, I don't think, you know, tenants should be kicked out because, you know, some sort of landlord wants to take advantage of their, you know, selling the house and taking advantage of the equity. I think, you know, we went back and forth on these, on this statute, and it's ready to pass.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work on the commission. We have Alex, and then there was one card which was, I think, mischaracterized as oral communications, Linda Newmeyer. So first Alex and then Linda.
Hi. Landlords are here representing their businesses and only care to protect their profits. Meanwhile, the tenants here today are here to protect their survival. We are not on equal playing fields, which is why tenants need the protections on this ordinance and then some. We need to add a right to return for any rent evictions, and tenants want to have safe housing too. But we just don't want to have renovations be used against us to get evicted so that landlords have an easy way to empty a unit and then double the rent. Why the hell are tenants being evicted just so that the landlord can do their bare minimum responsibility? It does not make sense. Tenants should have temporary housing paid for by the landlord, and tenants should be able to return for the same rate of rent if a landlord wants to do renovations. Glendale needs to follow South Pasadena's footsteps and ban rent evictions. The ordinance needs to include language that actually enforces these protections, not just encourages them. Like my teammates have mentioned, a lot of tenants are being served eviction notices without proper permits and without proper relocation fees. We need a moratorium on rent evictions, as this paper says on my chest, and we need rent control in Glendale, actual rent control. That's it.
Thank you. And our last card, please, Linda Newmeyer. Then we'll go to the phones.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to support that we would have no rent evictions. You've heard tonight from attorneys who have told you that rent evictions are going on all over Glendale, and you've heard from some tenants who are facing these rent evictions. The tenants, all tenants, all of us I can speak for, want clean, safe places to live. The rent evictions that are going on now often apply to tenants who have lived here for 10, 20, 30 years in the houses that the landlords have chosen, that have provided for them. And now that the landlords find a financial advantage to fix up these places, they want to boot them out. This is horrible that people would treat each other like this. There is something unseemly about pushing families in our community out of their homes during this time of year, Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah. We don't have to do this now. We should have a rent eviction, and I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to the phones. And how many do we have?
We have eight callers. Our first caller is Carmen Arum. Carmen, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and city council members. I am calling to express my opposition to the moratorium on eviction due to substantial renovations. People prior to my getting on the call have already spoken as to why we are... to my getting on the call have already spoken as to why we are opposing this. I'm a long-term resident and a housing provider in the city of Glendale, and I think that this moratorium would be a step in the wrong direction and is of not be working well in the interest of the landlords or the tenants. So I ask you to please give a careful consideration before our final decision is taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Bridget McNelly. Bridget, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. I am a Glendale resident, a renter and attorney at law. In my time here in Glendale, both community organizing and my pro bono work with the Neighborhood Legal Services Housing Clinic, I've seen firsthand the heartbreaking impact of this city's failed tenant protection. Watching disabled elders and young children sob to me as they face imminent houselessness due to the durative protection that the city affords its majority tenant community, our memories will certainly haunt me for the rest of my day. So I'm using my time in this forum to remind you, the Glendale City Council, that your constituency is over 66% renters. We are the super majority in the city. It continues to surprise me that a city with one of the largest tenant populations per capita in the state of California does not have a single tenant representing their interest on the city council. And while the city council that sits before us may not reflect the massive tenant population of Glendale, they are certainly tasked with representing them. Longtime Glendale residents are being evicted and displaced from their homes, will still try to recover economically from the devastating impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Any prospective permissive displacement for any period of time should be viewed shrewdly and skewed in the favor of the tenants, who make up almost the entirety of the lower income populations whose financial concerns were just highlighted as a priority for this council as raised and created these action items discussed tonight. The bare minimum this council could do to show a commitment to a tenant's super majority of constituents would be adopting a moratorium on so-called rent evictions, as we've seen with our neighbors in South Pasadena. Many of the comments we heard tonight representing landlord interests are, by their own admission, representing landlords of several multi-unit buildings. These are not mom and pop Glendale residents renting out their back units to help subsidize their own home mortgage. Tenants should not be displaced by any more of these thinly veiled cash drafts by large.
Thank you, Bridget. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next caller is Lupe Cagero. Lupe, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi.
Hello, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I support the moratorium and banning renovation evictions. I speak as a tenant living in Glendale over 41 years, currently 66 years old, and having lived in my current apartment for over 19 years. I am currently going through an eviction due to major renovations, living in substandard conditions, carpet not changed for over 19 and a half years. Big hall in my hallway and closet roof told it was emergency repairs, hasn't been done the emergency repairs for over three months, unable to move, spent all my savings on burying my mother, only child, no funds, extremely high rents, new landlords asking for first and last month's rent, plus very high security deposit. And now it seems, and it is my very sincere belief that my fractured ankle that I now have is the result of my landlord inciting a man to come and harass me in my own parking lot and telling me to pat my backs and leave. A man that I've never seen in my life. I've incurred lots of wages and feeling very, et cetera, and feeling very much discriminated and suffering retaliation. I respectfully appeal to the Honorable Mayor and Council members to support the moratorium for major repairs and approve major renovations without current tenant evictions or exorbitant rental increases due to the renovations for the seniors, lower income residents, and families with children not be displaced from their apartments and homes. Landlords are only looking at the exorbitant profits from the major renovations, but please also consider all the long time resident renters unable to stay in their homes due to the renovation, renovations. Do not send us to the streets due to the overwhelming avarice of owners.
Thank you, Lupe. Thank you, Lupe. Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Jiro Habesian. Jiro, you have two minutes. Go ahead, Jiro.
Good evening, Mayor Botman, Council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak very briefly. I'm Jiro Habesian, a local Realtor, city advocate, and most of you know me as a longtime volunteer in the city for over 20 years, both with tenants and everybody else. Both tenants and property owners are a key fabric of our dual city. The reality is they need each other. Tenants need housing and property owners need tenants. I do support tenants' rights strongly, but I also understand the need for stability for property owners. And if you've lived in Glendale for longer than a minute, you know we have some of the oldest housing in the county. The committee has specifically stated that the quality of living standards was part of their key goals when they were having these discussions. All tenants deserve a clean space and quality of life, but this proposed moratorium, I think, will have the exact opposite result of its intention. I think what has to be achieved is an objective balance of tenant and property owner benefits and rights. I urge you to take the proper time and work with all local stakeholders, tenants and everybody else, and come up with a balanced approach. This moratorium is not that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kathy Levkovitz. Kathy, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much, Council and Mayor Botman. I appreciate the time you're giving me this evening. Jiro said it all just now. I really have to agree with everything he said. I'm very concerned about the prospect of a moratorium and how it would affect our community in ways we we may not even recognize at this point. I think you have a very strong report in front of you that addresses many of the issues that were of our concern as Realtors. My, my one area that I have concern is the mom and pops. I do think that they should be, how did he put it, carved out, carved out of the equation and looked at separately. 20 units, that's what they figure mom and pop has to have under 20 units. Most of them only have four, four, maybe, maybe six at the most. So these are the mom and pops I'm concerned about, that I believe are having hardships and would be impacted very adversely with any moratorium. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next caller is Pamela Augustine. Pamela, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Pamela. I'm a Glendale resident and a member of the Glendale Tenants Union. I am also a community organizer with the Stay House Delay Program. Stronger protections are needed to keep the majority of us Glendale residents housed, and the majority are renters. The ordinance revisions before you are minimal changes to what is already a weak Glendale rental rights program. The rights that we need include a ban on rent evictions. We need protections against the harassment that tenants are currently facing, and you have heard their testimonies tonight. Regarding the weak ordinance amendments before you, the proposed revision that reduces 90-day notice to tenants for the rental increase to 60 days is ridiculous. In practice, a majority of residents that we as GTU support, we are an all-volunteer group, we see that residents don't even get this minimum 90 days. Regarding rent banking, a stronger and more just policy revision would be to remove this ridiculous piece of legislation altogether. The unincorporated LA County areas and LA City do not have rent banking, and neither should our city. What we need is a policy platform that works for the majority of us renters, that keeps our vulnerable residents housed, that truly moves us towards homelessness prevention, and that includes rent stabilization, a right to counsel, strong code enforcement against the injustices like Lupe Cagero is facing. We need residents to be able to live in livable, safe, stable conditions. We need you to support those kinds of policies, not the weak ones before you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Matthew Buck. Matthew, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Botman and Council members. Matthew Buck, Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association. California Apartment Association represents local housing providers, from those that offer single-family residents to large apartment communities. Our members help house Glendale. I just wanted to thank Council, City Staff, and the Ad Hoc Committee for working to improve the right to these ordinance, and also we appreciate City Staff including us throughout the process. We sent the letter. There's just a few items that we highlighted in the letter for you to review before you consider this. I just wanted to highlight one item. It's regarding substantial remodel timeline being extended from 30 days to 60. We respectfully ask Council to remove the longer timeline of 60 days and mirror state law at 30 days. AB 1482 and the rehabilitation provisions were created after months of debate and strove to strike a delicate balance between further regulation and continuing to incentivize the development and maintenance of rental property. 60 days would place a severe financial burden on housing providers and would ultimately make it harder for necessary upgrades to take place. If this item is of concern to the Council, we hope that there would be further conversations on this important issue. I also humbly ask that any new ideas presented tonight be given time for review in the same manner that other changes to the ordinance have been given. Wanted to give another shout out to City Staff for working for us. Please continue to engage with CAA and our housing partners on these important issues to ensure Glendale avoids unintended consequences regarding its affordable housing supply. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Well, that was pretty good. I appreciate everybody being concise and, for the most part, sticking to their times. Let's go around for questions. I'm sure we all have a lot of questions for staff. Does anybody want to begin?
I do. I have some.
Hey, Councilmember Najarian.
So let me understand what type of housing is subject to this ordinance. You do say in definitions that if it's a, do you want to, you want to chime in on that? You know what my question was?
Yeah, I was going to ask them.
Because I already presented it to you. So are single-family homes included? Because the way it's written, it is.
No, we just, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, Councilmember Najarian, the area that you're discussing, the intention was specifically to mirror state law as it relates to duplexes and not to include single-family homes as part of the definition. And so Mr. Garcia just identified something that we need to fix to make sure that it, in fact, reflects that. In fact, during all of the stakeholder meetings, we did represent that it was duplexes where the owner who occupies it would be exempt from the ordinance, but duplexes where the owner is not an occupant. Both sides of the property are being rented, just like state law, that would be included as part of the protections.
So duplexes, non-owner occupied on either side are subject to this?
Correct.
Single-family homes are not?
That's intent. We'll, we'll have some language to adjust to make sure that that's correct.
How about a home with an ADU in the back? How are ADUs dealt with?
We would identify that to be like a duplex where the owner is not an occupant in the unit because we're talking about parcels with two or greater units. So then if the occupant in the, is not an occupant in the ADU in the main home and both are being rented, then it would be subject to the ordinance.
Okay. Let me, let me also ask you the question on the qualified tenant. Those definitions, to me, seem rather broad. 62 or above, or you have a kid in school, or you've lived there more than 10 years. I don't know who, who that leaves out, but is that a state definition that we're adopting, that we have to adopt, or is that something that, that we created in our group?
Yeah, we don't, we don't, it is a definition that we identified from another agency. You are not required to stick to that specific definition. So feel free to adjust it however you see.
How about the age 62 part?
Age 62, we, that, that does mirror federal law, I believe. Mr. Zovak would be able to speak to that better with regard to where that 62 figure came from.
Correct. For the, in federal law, the definition of a senior household is 62. So that's how that number was selected.
Okay, so that, so that's what that number is tied to, but there's no requirement that that be adopted in any qualified tenant definition?
No.
Correct. Absent of a discussion, we had looked to the federal regulation for an age limit.
I mean, 62, I'm 62-ish. I don't think, I don't feel old. I think I, I'm still working. I'm still productive. So I think that number is a little low personally, unless you're going to include someone with disabilities. But a disability more than just hitting your knee on the podium and having a doctor say that you've got a mobility issue. So I'm concerned about making that qualified tenant definition too broad. The other question is, just walk me through a, a renovation. Let's say I'm a tenant, let's say I'm a housing provider, and although the inside of the unit looks great, there's problems behind the walls. Let's say there's, let's say there's termites. Let's say there's electrical problems. Let's say there's roof problems. Let's say there's, I don't know what other components are there to a house, sewage, sewage problems. And I'm renting that, let's say it's a two-bedroom for $3,000 a month, and I come to the city and I show them that my renovations, or I would have to show them that my renovations cost, and let's say the 3,000 is a fair market value, eight times the 3,000, so 24,000. And I would have to show that that renovation period would take more than 90 days under the current, under your current draft. And if that's the case, depending on the timing, the land, the, the housing provider would have to pay relocation, let's say it's a qualified, let's say someone is 63 years old in there, would have to pay six times 3,000.
Eight.
No.
I'm, uh.
No, no, no. Twice the relocation.
Oh, right.
Right. Six, six times the 3,000 plus the, the fixed fee, which is?
2,000.
Two. Is that doubled also?
Times two.
Two plus two. So what does that turn out to be?
Roughly 20,000.
Six times, six times three is 18, plus four is 22,000. So I would have to pay at some point, not in one piece, 22,000 to the, the tenant for that, and my renovation already has to cost six times, or eight times three is 24, so there'd be 24 on that as well. So that's what a, a housing provider would have to, to look at. Plus, he'd have three months, 90 days of no, no rent. Okay. Let's say it's less than 60, less than 90 days. Let's say the work requires 60 days only. So as a housing provider, do I have to pay housing, hotel for the tenant in those 60 days?
No. So with regard to the rent eviction, the expectation is that the tenant.
I don't like that word. Okay, we're not creating words here. Let's, let's be specific because unless rent eviction is in our ordinance, let's not use that. I understand someone is claiming that they created it.
I don't like it either. I've heard it here first.
It's created in Glendale, right? Let's, you know, let's let the news people know.
Yes, what created it?
With, with regard to the major rehab provision, the expectation would be that the tenant would receive the relocation and move out and not have the ability to come back. So the tenant would be made whole on the front end at the time of the eviction so long as the landlord meets the additional.
Okay, but my, my contractor says it only takes six, this is only a 60-day job. It's not a 90-day job. So we're not talking about an eviction.
I see.
Right. What happens then?
Presumably, the work can be done while the tenant is able to continue to habitate.
Why do we presume that, though? Why do we presume that?
If the tenant cannot habitate the unit, then the tenant would If the tenant cannot habitate the unit, then the tenant would continue to pay the rent while... They would come to some sort of an arrangement with the landlord. They would then have to be relocated temporarily and then be allowed to continue to pay rent as they're technically occupying the unit.
But technically, it's not habitable. So why would you be paying rent for an uninhabitable unit? I think there's a law on that.
Because you're habitating some other location.
That the landlord is paying for.
Correct.
And then, when it's done, the tenant moves back in at the same rent that was before.
Correct.
Do you think, while you were discussing this, did you ever think that this might have a chilling effect on renovations? The fact that either... Whether it's a 90-day or something just less than 90-day, that a housing provider would say, you know what? This is just too much of a hassle. Why should I put all this effort in to damage, let's say that I didn't commit, that's just... Let's call it normal wear and tear, and move the tenant out, pay for the housing and the meals? Meals are included, right? I saw meals were included in here tonight.
That was in the context of intentional disrepair.
So if I haven't repaired it, it's intentional disrepair and it's time to repair the unit at this point. So I see a little bit of vagueness and ambiguity in that. Did you consider... Did the working group consider that this would have a chilling effect on maintaining a quality housing stock, which is, after all, one of the primary reasons and, as you know, the purpose, the legislative purpose of this whole thing?
So this particular section, if you'll recall, came as a result of the discussions that council was having in October and in November. So this wasn't an area, and we stated that at the top of the meeting where we were talking about this. This specific area came about in response to some of the conversations about the moratorium, in response to potentially a loophole for landlords to use that section of the code and utilize it more. And we were seeing some of the calls that were coming through, an uptick on the use of that particular section of the code to vacate. Because currently, in that example, the value that the landlord would pay for relocation would be about $5,000. The tenant would be out for about three months, and then they would... And then the renovations would maybe be done, maybe not. And so, in response to some of the comments that we heard here and looking at what state law was offering, looking at what South Pasadena, Culver City, what City Ballet, those different agencies were offering in the context of substantial remodel, that's where that language came from, really mirroring what state law requires. The additional 90-day period came as a result of discussions that we had during the stakeholder meetings. For the last two weeks, we've extended an opportunity to stakeholder groups, both landlord representatives, tenant representatives, and we heard the feedback with regard to that 90-day. Now, the landlord groups objected to that. They felt it was too long. But given the length of time that true remodel could potentially take, meaning things like replacing a roof at the same time, changing out pipes, dealing with foundational issues, all of those things, once you've obtained the permit, could potentially take up to 90 days. So that's where that 90-day period came from. It was as a result of feedback that we received from the community.
I have another question. You know, let's keep this in context. Ever since COVID hit, landlords, I've heard, have been really at a disadvantage because the state laws and the county laws prevented evictions based on non-payment of rent. And then, it went even further to say that after when rents began due, a landlord could not ask for that other rent as part of the terms of tenancy. They would have to go to a small claims court. So if a landlord has... This first example where a landlord has to pay, we were probably in the, what, the six times three plus four thousands of dollars. Can a landlord look back and recoup some of that unpaid rent from nine months ago, 10 months ago, a year ago? Because you sort of talk about that a little bit in this. So here's the landlord that wants to do the renovation. Let me make it clear. The tenant hasn't paid rent for one reason or another, due to state law, due to county law, and the law says that the landlord can't use that as a reason for eviction. They tell the landlord, well, it's a debt. Take him to small claims court. But there's that unpaid amount. Let's say the landlord, in good faith, wants to do the renovation, and it does... It is going to take 90 days, and it is going to be sufficiently expensive, and he owes that relocation. He can apply that relocation that he would otherwise give to the tenant to recoup unpaid rent. Is that correct?
The way that the ordinance is currently written, it does say that a landlord may recoup, but there's no change in this area. That's what our existing ordinance says, that...
Okay, I'm not saying we changed it, but I just... I want to get the rules down.
Right. If there is unpaid rent, and our ordinance doesn't qualify because it came pre-COVID, it doesn't qualify whether it was as a result of COVID or otherwise. It does say that the landlord may be able to recoup unpaid rent as part of the... As a deduction from the relocation payment.
Relocation, okay. Okay, very interesting. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Devine? Oh.
Actually, I only have a couple of seconds. Jen showed her apartment, and she's saying that it doesn't, you know, that... Look at her apartment. It doesn't need renovating. Who decides? I mean, do we send inspectors out there and look and see, why are you renovating? Then any of them can go in and...
We do not. The city is not in a place to inspect, to determine whether the unit needs the renovation or not. If someone applies for the permit and they've done it properly and they've received the permit, then it's incumbent on them to carry through on the work. We don't make a determination of whether a 60-year-old kitchen is in a worse condition than a two-year-old kitchen.
Right. That's interesting. Yeah, go ahead. No, please.
So that's our current practice. We don't look back to see whether the work was done?
So what we do have is... There's no post-repair inspection that's built into the process. It's something that we've been evaluating. We did confirm, though, that if someone files for a permit and it requires, you know, they've applied for five different types of permit, and then after the move out, the landlord goes in and does a change in scope of work to reduce that number, then the inspector would be aware of that. What we're trying to put into place now is that to allow it to trigger some additional notices to the Community Development Department so that, A, the landlord becomes aware on the front end that Chapter 9.30 is being triggered, and then, second of all, that if the tenants call with questions, at least we have the ability to confirm the scope of the work, the type of permits that they've applied for, and those kinds of things. So in the past, that was not a practice. We're looking into cost-effective ways for staff to be able to put some additional protections in place without necessitating the hiring of additional individuals.
Okay. So then, could Jen call the city planning and say, these permits were taken out? Are they, you know, are they necessary? And then, an inspector would go out and check it?
Not the issue of whether they're necessary, but whether they're legitimate permits. Are they properly issued? Those kinds of things.
Okay, wrong verbiage. Whether they're legitimate or not. So she could do that. That's... She can do. Right now, go...
Sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Devine. At no point will an inspector go out from our end for any type of eviction notice. We're not going to go to the unit and tell the landlord, yes, your unit is okay to demolish. We don't do that, and that's not going to be a practice unless, of course, you decide today that that's something you want us to do. But we're not... We don't have inspectors that go out for evictions.
But if the work does not... Let's say the permits are taken out, they're valid permits, they're issued, but then the work is not done or some of the work is not done. What happens then? We would never know.
Right. And what happens if...
To raise it, if they got this notice.
But how would the tenant know? The tenant's already gone.
The process would be as follows. The landlord would submit applications for a permit. The permit is then issued. As part of the notice requirements, they would then serve the copies of the permits, scope of work, et cetera, to the tenants. The tenant can dispute the necessity of the work, but that's not where the city would get involved. They could potentially raise it as an affirmative defense if they're sued for it, but again, that's not where the city would get involved. After the tenant has moved and potentially made whole because of the value of the relocation being increased or being considered to be increased, if the landlord does not actually complete the work and the tenant becomes aware of it, then the tenant would potentially have some rights to pursue against the landlord. It would be difficult, but they would have some remedies in that regard. From the city's perspective, what we're looking at is whether or not, if a landlord, in those circumstances, once 9.30 is triggered, whether a reduction in the scope of work, because there are inspectors that repeatedly go out to check on the status of the work, if at some point, it's demonstrated that the landlord did not complete all of the work and, in fact, evicted a tenant in order to get around the ordinance and not fully do the work, then those are some of the areas that we're exploring through our IT department and through Building and Safety to make sure that we can incorporate certain protections so that there's follow-up. Now, what does that mean for the tenant? The tenant would have moved by then, so it doesn't offer that particular tenant some sort of repair. They could potentially go back and sue, but it does, again, with some of the language that we're adding with regard to administrative citations and those kinds of things, it might give the city the additional ability to pursue enforcement of the ordinance itself.
Okay, my last question, and maybe we should think about putting in those protections. How many buildings or multifamily units are right now currently undergoing renovation that is causing evictions? How many do we have?
So we only become aware of those when the tenants complain to us because landlords repair units and evict tenants justly under our ordinance, and they don't... They may not result in a complaint. The parties could agree to the process and receive the relocation and move. So it would be difficult for us to say how many times that's triggered. We don't keep track of that. What we're hoping to do is to start keeping track of it so that we could have better statistics.
Okay, that's right. But right now, we just know of two. We are currently...
I think there's three.
Three. Three?
I don't want to cut off. Councilmember...
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Kusak.
I have a number of questions, and I understand this is a very important issue for many people. We have some very hyper-mobilized and motivated sides to this on either side, and I think that we're perhaps overthinking some of these. What my desire is, as a council person, as a resident of this city, as someone who's been elected to consider these issues is, and it's one of the reasons why we had an ad hoc committee put together to discuss these issues and brought them... Bring them to us, which is why I'm troubled that some of these issues are coming to us without having been vetted through that process, is because we are trying to close some of the loopholes that some few individuals are abusing to evict tenants from their places that they're inhabiting in order to rent it to other individuals at a higher price. So my questions are the following. First of all, let me start with one of the ones, and I took a bunch... I jotted a number of notes during your presentation. You said that we took the definition of qualified tenant from another agency. Which agency did we take that from, and why did we select that agency to use for the definition versus any others?
I think the definition came from the City Ballet.
But a lot of cities have similar definitions for those specific qualified...
Similar, but not the same. So why this particular one?
Well, based on discussions with the committee, the committee's recommended that staff take this part of the ordinance and come up with an idea. This is the idea we came up with. We could have picked other cities, but they were all very similar. It's not like other cities had 75 for the age. I believe all of them that discussed qualified tenant had 62. But again, as Lucy mentioned earlier, all these points, as far as qualified tenant, can be discussed amongst council to change. Maybe make it 75, remove the requirement for families with children. All of it is adjustable, and we saw that in other agencies, but we chose this one.
I mean, that, for me, is somewhat troublesome because, I mean, I do not look at LA to be a leading example of anything, quite honestly. I'll say that what... I'm not looking for any brownie points or thumbs ups. I'm just stating what my opinion is. I look at, you know, I mean, people can laud LA for whatever it may be, you know, rent control, for instance, but quite honestly, our rents are lower in Glendale, on average, than they are in Los Angeles and in many other places. In terms of, you know, we talk about this relocation fee and the renovation process and how a tenant is supposed to receive compensation to find another location for two months, maybe three months while a renovation is being done. Practically speaking, can anyone explain to me, or was it discussed even in the committee, how that even happens? Like, where are these apartments that are rentable for just two months or three months that then a person can come back? I'm just curious. What statistical information do we have? Because I can tell you, you know, given all of the fluctuation and shifting laws that we've had in tenant, landlord, housing provider, renter relationships, I don't think anyone is going to rent... I mean, what is the percentage of places renting month to month?
So with regard to the major rehab, the issue isn't temporary relocation to somewhere else. The individual would just be given the funds, the relocation amounts, and they would vacate the unit, and we do not have a provision for them to return back to that unit specifically for the reason that you stated, which is where would they occupy? Where would they go for...
So it's a de facto-go-pound-sand payment? Like, you know, just figure something else out? And, I mean, like, it would be interesting for me to know what percentage of, in these remodels, renovations, what percentage of the tenants actually are returned to their original unit? I mean, that would be something I'd like to know.
The city of Glendale currently has that requirement, right? With a lower relocation value, similar provisions such as having the unit be uninhabitable for a minimum period of 30 days, and there is no right of return in the city of Glendale presently. So the relocation or the rationale for the move is current law. The relocation value was so low that it allowed for an almost immediate recoup once the unit had been renovated. And so, it didn't become a deterrent for a landlord to say that we need to vacate this unit because for $5,000, they could buy out a tenant and then recoup the cost almost immediately.
Okay, but my question was, we don't... So, in other words, we do not have that statistical information. That's fine. So because for me, when we talk about substantial renovation, as a city, we should be able to very clearly determine what requires a person making renovations to require the tenant to vacate the premises versus what appears to be in these two cases that we've now been grappling with for nearly a month that we're... two cases that we've now been grappling with for nearly a month that were brought to our attention, seems to be simply cosmetic. So, when, when an applicant takes out a permit, are they not clearly stating on there what the permits are for, Mr. Calvert?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, they do. I think it would require a threshold to be set of what would be considered substantial work. If we go back to the point that Ms. Farpeti was speaking about, I don't think we want to be in the business of judging what is, other than a life, safety, health, and welfare issue, so I think we'd want to set the parameters around that.
But if we set those parameters, then we've defined what is substantial and what is necessary.
So, if, if, if it's something that is, that poses a threat, right, water, electricity, heat, things like that, yes, it would be harder to make judgment calls than it came to flooring, things like that.
Has that been part of the discussions in, in regards to, I mean, everyone is all worked up about a moratorium now on, on either side of this, and we have yet to define what is considered absolutely necessary in terms of renovation. I don't think any resident who has been given notice by a landlord would say, "No, let me stay in this lead paint-infested or asbestos-infested unit. I'd rather stay here at the risk of my own health" versus leaving, you making those changes and me coming back. What looks like is happening is cabinets are being changed and maybe a few sinks or fixtures are being changed, maybe carpet, and folks are being put out on the street as a result of it. I mean, why is that so difficult for us to get a grasp on as to closing the loopholes?
So, our ordinance originally did not have a definition of substantial remodel, and the proposed ordinance does, and it mirrors what state law requires, and that's on page 10 of the red line that was submitted to you, and it talks about a substantial remodel being a replacement or substantial modification of any structural, electrical, plumbing, or mechanical systems that require a permit from a government agency or the abatement of hazardous materials, et cetera. We do then go on to say that cosmetic improvements alone, including flooring, countertops, replacement painting, countertop replacement painting, decorating, et cetera, those minor repairs would not be considered a substantial remodel. So, we think that this specific definite, the addition of this specific section actually fortifies our existing ordinance, because our ordinance did not have a definition of substantial remodel, and in fact, this was something that was proposed through the, the tenant groups that we discussed, that we met with during the, and in fact, I think, if, if I may, I think all parties essentially agree to the state law revision with the exception of the 90 days that's being proposed. That's where, that's where the disagreement is from between the groups.
But, but again, this was something that was discussed post the ad hoc committee's deliberations?
Specifically in response to the discussions the council was having with regard to the moratorium, and this was staff's way of offering a potential solution instead of, to the moratorium that you've been discussing. But we did have the opportunity to vet this through all of the stakeholder groups.
I, I would just add, so, to the extent that the renovation-based eviction was being viewed as a loophole, this was proposed by, and it was as the committee was winding down its work and you were starting to get feedback here at council meetings, this was a way to sort of address that, to make it, to put more steps to, to be able to enact or to implement a renovation-based eviction. So, that's where it came, it came out of that, and staff did work, work, but that was, that was as the committee completed its work, and you, we were all starting to hear this, these issues related to these, quote, renovations.
Okay, I mean, personally, I think the ad hoc committee, for my sake, should be a more permanent body, should be a permanent body in Glendale. We know that it exists in Burbank. I think that they've done some important work in terms of educating and getting information out to the public. I've, I've watched a few of their meetings, certainly not enough of them, but I think to not run this by the committee would have been, is, is a disservice to the work that they've done and the expertise that they have. We've heard certainly from some of them this evening, and I've had the opportunity to talk to some of them outside of here, and also, you know, there is the issue of when one of the committee members is no longer with us, you know, there should have been some effort to find out how to fill that, that position, because that was the intent of the council. On, on rent reduction for, and I'll just ask this, and I don't want to take up too much of the time. I know that the others will have their comments and questions. Rent reductions for services, service reduction. How often has that happened and how, the reason this raises a question is because without the specificity of it, what happens when a pool is closed for safety reasons or repairs or a new law that prevents gas grills from being used on, on the premises of a, of a complex? You know, does that mean that a tenant has the right to then go and demand a reduction in, in rent or says, "I'm not going to pay because the gas, the communal gas grill is not working"? I mean, those are, I think that one of the question, one of the issues that was brought up, I think if it's done in a retaliatory fashion, that's something that we should identify and provide for rights for tenants to pursue, but I don't particularly like the vagueness of, of the rent reduction for service reduction, because I think that, that may create more problems than it actually solves. I'll stop here, Mayor, and I may have some other follow-up questions.
Okay, let me ask my question. So, there's a lot here. First of all, I know we're spending a lot of time on this, you know, question of, what do we call it, just cause notice, just cause eviction for major remodel. Is that what we're calling it? But I do kind of, let me just run through some of the other things, and I just want to say, and maybe I should preface it saying, you know, you've been doing a lot of great work. The Landlord-Tenant Commission has done a lot of great work. It's hard. There's a lot here, and you're, you're trying to balance things, and that's what we want, is balance. I mean, we want, we want to protect tenants. We, we want to reduce displacement because it harms our community. At the same time, you know, we all understand that people that are providing rental property are providing a service that is necessary. Otherwise, nobody, no tenant would have a place to live. So, we got to do something that's kind of preventing the dislocation at the same time, not, not, what was Councilmember Najarian's term, not freezing or not...
Chilling.
Chilling, chilling. I knew that's, not, you know, chilling the, the work to upgrade and, and, you know, maintain our housing stock. So, that's, I think, all of our goals. But anyway, let me just, just go through some of the other things on here. So, legislative purpose, you know, I thought that was good. I don't have any comments on that. What you've done with base rent, how you've defined that. The qualified tenant, I do think that merits some more discussion. I agree 62, which is like, I'm, I'm 62-ish also.
You're a young man, Ben.
I'm actually 64. I'll just say it. I'll just put it out there. Like, yeah, I wouldn't really think somebody like me should be eligible for special treatment, so, and this question of disabled, yeah, I don't understand this definition, so maybe we would, we just want to make sure that what we're, what we're addressing here are people that are really extremely vulnerable, right, are, are, are our most vulnerable population. So, I think we should come back to that. The definition of rental units, I'm okay with. The retroactive date, I'm okay with. The one-year lease, I'm okay with everything that you've proposed. Nuisance, the owner move-in stuff, I think is all good. What you're doing with rent-based termination, I'm fine with. So, it really comes down to, the only, the only questions for me are, are this question of, you know, major rehab, and, and then this, this question is, as I just said, the qualified tenant. Those are the two areas. Everything else to me is, is like, it's okay, and, and I would be prepared to say, "Let's just go ahead with it." It's, it's kind of the outcome of, I think, a lot of good work with the Landlord-Tenant Commission and with, with staff. So, if we could, I don't know if anybody else agrees that we can kind of narrow on those two areas that are at, at issue?
Yep.
And then, okay.
No, are, can you finish?
I have more, I have more, but, you know. So, on, on that so-called, I'll put air quotes around, rent eviction, okay. You know, I, I was the one that brought up this question of a moratorium, because I looked at what South Pasadena did, and South Pasadena initiated a moratorium, not for the sake of a moratorium, but it was to study the issue so that they could very, you know, thoughtfully try to address a problem, which is not just an isolated problem. It's not two buildings in Glendale. It's a very widespread problem. If you, you know, read the press, you know this is happening all over. So, and there's a business model. There are people we know who have a business model of, you know, buying up, you know, properties that are kind of in disrepair with low rents and throwing everybody out, fixing them up, and, and renting them out at, at market. And I get it. I mean, I get it. It makes financial sense to do it, but it harms our community because it's, it's displacing so many people who've created a community where they live. So, so anyway, what South Pasadena did is wanted to, wanted to study it, and they put in a moratorium so that they would have breathing room, just like we've done with many other things, downtown development or, you know, drive-throughs. We put in a moratorium while we study something. So, that was, that was the idea. Now, what South Pass came out of that with is basically they, you know, and I don't know if, if we would want to go there, but they're saying, "If you're doing major renovation, find a way to do it around the tenant. Keep the tenant in place. If you have to move the tenant out, you're going to have to pay for that." And what they are requiring landlords to pay is pretty hefty. It's like two times the, the daily rate or something of the rental plus a, like a food per diem. It's quite, it's quite significant. So, I don't know if that's the right outcome, but the idea was, "Let's just stop the bleeding and then quickly work on figuring out a way to move forward," not that this moratorium would be a forever thing. That was the idea. Now, I know you've done a lot of, you've done a lot of other things in here in terms of, you know, extending the time period for, for a, a unit being uninhabitable. You've increased the, the relocation amount. So, I think the things you've done are pretty good, and I could live with them and, and kind of say, "Forget about the moratorium. Forget about going to a more extreme position. Let's see if this works. Let's watch what happens in South Pasadena and other places that are, you know, because I'm interested," and they are too. They said they want to look at it, you know, every three months to see if it's having a negative impact on, on, you know, the housing stock. So, they're not sure that this is really right either. So, anyway, that was the idea. So, I would, I would still like to do that, but I could also just live with adopting what we have here. I think it's good work, and it touches all the bases. One question I have is this, this point that the unit is uninhabitable for, for 90 days, right? How do we know, how do we know, I mean, ideally, we want the work to be done around the tenant being in place, right? And a lot of things can be done that way. Many, many types of work, whether it's electrical or plumbing, you know, we've all done it. We live in our, in our places while this work is going on. That's a thing I would like to try to maximize. And, and so, how do we know if this is a situation where the tenant really cannot be in the, in the unit while the work is going on versus a situation where the tenant, you know, could potentially stay in the unit, deal with the noise and commotion of, of some work, but would be willing to do that?
It, Mr. Mayor, that becomes incredibly subjective, and it would be difficult for us to regulate that. So, for example, on the one hand, you don't want children. You don't want seniors living around inside construction while there's dust, debris, and those kinds of things. But on the other hand, there are ways that you could do the soft story renovations. You could replace roofs. You could even do sewage and water pipe switch outs, complete replacement of them while residents live there. It happens all the time. But how would the city regulate that? That's the challenge. How would, how would we direct a landlord to say that you are required to do that repair while the tenant is in the unit? I think in the 20-plus years that I've worked at the city, I think we've only seen that happen one time, and it was in the early 2000s where the tenants had to live through that. I think it ultimately became a prosecution case in our office because they were repiping, but there was bad faith on the part of the landlord that was making it very difficult for tenants to live through it. So, a conscientious landlord would be able to do that, but how do we inject conscientious behavior into a renovation when it's always easier to move someone out and then just do the repairs without there being the potential of, you know, a trip and fall, someone falling onto a nail, you know, those kinds of things? It would be difficult for the city to regulate that.
Ms. Farpeti, and Mayor, how is it done at the building, the senior building on Monterey?
I don't, I don't know what building.
I mean, that's, that's the question I have. We had Ms. Mofssian come here and complain about how some of the work was being done unpermitted and, you know, made a big deal about it. I've visited the building. I saw renovations happening. I saw significant renovations being done to units, and I, I'm not sure, but I would like to know how it was done, because I don't know how many of those seniors were displaced from that building. I don't think any of them were, so there's got to be a way, right?
They don't have to be displaced. That's, that's your point. They don't have to be displaced, but the question then becomes, who enforces that?
Well, so, one of the things I want to mention, and I forgot in all my notes that I was jotting down, one of the speakers who came up and spoke said, you know, made a very good point about having a landlord who is going to do work, and they give a notice to the tenants to file a copy of that notice with the city. Why can't we have that requirement? I mean, what is the hindrance from the city requiring that and having those copies of those notices on file for us to refer to?
Probably staffing. It, it requires just additional people to, to do a lot of these things. We have a list of suggestions on the backend, and many of them would require additional staffing, and we're trying to come up with solutions where that would not be the case. But the, the other argument that a landlord would make as to why not to leave the tenants in the units as they're doing the renovations is that sometimes it's, it's more costly to tackle each unit at a time versus having a blank slate and doing demo in, you know, two weeks versus demoing a kitchen while a family's living there, demoing a second kitchen while, you know, and so, bringing one demo company that does all of the work at one time could be a cost savings for a landlord. And so, that's, again, it's a balancing test that we're not in a position to do.
Mayor, councilmembers, I would say there's, there's a lot of different circumstances you're going to run into, right, renovating a unit. I think keeping that record, to your point, Councilmember Kusak, it may not be as big of a challenge if we ask him to turn that in at some point throughout the process. I would say in terms of the staffing issue, issue though, is our staff being able to go out there and inspect that, to be able to see whether or not that meets the minimum threshold, minimum qualification, making that judgment call, coming back out and visiting again, figuring out if that, you know, everything was kind of mapped out there for each specific unit or each building, per se, is on a construction schedule that justifies them leaving, and our staff being able to make that call, but also being able to go out there and physically do that work. We currently are not staffed at all to be able to do that. We would need significant staffing. If this issue is as large as, as we're presuming it to be here at this meeting, that would require a lot of staffing.
Although, we could potentially bring somebody in from outside.
We could, yes.
And we could, and that cost could be part of, part of the permit process.
Yeah, so, we, we definitely could go third party. We've done that before with our own inspections. That is, that is always an alternative.
Yeah. I don't know. There are a lot of, a lot of tough questions here, and I don't...
Why don't we give it back to the commission on those two items?
Well, I was, yeah, I was going to say, if I could, you know, I, I appreciate everything that staff's done, Lucy and Cipan, and it's absolutely true that this council wants to protect the renters, but when you're, especially when you're going through these difficult times, but, you know, at what cost? And I think we have to be fair to everyone, the tenants, and we have to find ways to protect them. These are, these are my issues. The QT, that 62, I raised that at the, at my briefing. That was way too young, especially. So, I, I would say that that should come up. The mom-and-pop carvat, I think that is absolutely necessary. I think that mom... I think that moms and pops would be devastated by these relocation fees and other parts of this ordinance. I think I agree with the attorney about removing the oral arrangement. I think everything. If we want to protect tenants, the one thing we have to do is make sure they get everything in writing. Everything in writing. That is my Bible. Get everything in writing. And I am, I am in favor of keeping the moratorium, I mean, wait a minute, against the moratorium. No, I'm against the moratorium. I think we have to renovate. We have to update our buildings. But because there are provisions that weren't discussed, that weren't agreed upon, there's so many questions being asked, I would think, and I agree with Councilmember Najarian, that maybe this should go back to the ad hoc committee with staff, talk all of these issues over again. Get them, get clarity, get specificity in all of the details, and then bring it back to us for a final vote.
Clarification, just those two areas? Because the rest, I think, is non-proversial.
Clarification on QT.
And the renovation.
And the renovation.
Could we address some of those issues, especially the mom and pop area that we haven't really discussed?
Right, right.
The feedback that we received from the owners' associations and the one from, I think, the ones I think that we got from the Apartment Owners Association, and it's in a red line, their understanding of a mom and pop is rental property with 20 or fewer units. So, their description is not three units, four units. It's anything under 20 units. And we have some rough figures from, I mean, that would considerably...
We can draw that line wherever we want.
Yes, but my point is when we have comments that address mom and pop, their understanding of mom and pop is reflective of something different. And so the objections about broadening the ordinance protections to include everybody else is, we need to understand that we're all working from the same baseline definition. And the comments we've been receiving does not match that baseline definition. Specifically, the issue of the mom and pops was discussed at the committee. And the committee members, through a give and take, agreed that all of those units should be treated the same. So on the one hand, you've got a housing provider who is in the business of providing housing, and as a result of that, needs to be aware of housing requirements. For example, you know, any housing provider cannot discriminate, no differently than if you own a three unit or a 20 unit. Why should the tenant who lives in a three unit not be offered, for example, the protections of a one-year lease, which is currently being exempted? We don't see that distinction of a three and four in state law. And so this becomes a little bit more consistent with the definitions and the protections that we see under state law. In addition, we pulled some numbers from the census with regard to what that really means. Of the 46, roughly 46 residential units that are 46,000 residential units that are being offered, those that are 20 and above amount to about 21,000. The three and four units are about 5,500. So, it's not a huge pool of landlords that we're impacting, but what we were having difficulty with was, how do you make the distinction between a triplex or a fourplex that is owned by a corporation, or a single owner who owns multiple triplexes or fourplexes and in total owns 30 units, and someone who just owns the three units?
Well, how does LA do it? Just kidding. I don't want to know. I really don't.
Yeah, it's, I mean, because somebody, a corporation could work through an LLC and hide who they are, right?
Couldn't we just have a carve-out mom and pops and commercial? Like that?
Honestly, Mayor, councilmember, that is going to be a tough thing to decide. I think, Dan, you hit that right on the head, that we're not going to know who is operating this. This could be broken up amongst different LLCs. They may own one building here, there's four units. They may own 100 units somewhere in Orange County. Defining that is going to be very difficult to do.
Yeah, that seems kind of impossible. But anyway...
With regard to the point about oral arrangements, specifically, and we had someone from the Neighbored Legal Services, it was something that the committee sort of grappled with. We did look at that issue. There was real ambiguity as to what the proposed amendment was. So, we looked to other regulations with regard to that. And in that, again, we only saw that example in the City of LA, and not taking the City of LA's example as the best one, but the only one at this point. The City of LA required that all arrangements be reduced to writing, with the exception of rent increases. The two parties had to agree to a change in the terms of the tenancy that had converted to a month-to-month. That seemed too onerous for a landlord. If we left it just up for, sometimes if you come into an oral arrangement, it needs to be reduced to writing. The feedback that we received from the attorneys that represent, not the tenants, not the owners, but the attorneys who litigate these issues, they said typically that would work against a tenant's interests because they would not think to reduce something into an oral arrangement. Go ahead and have parking spot number two, which is right next to your apartment, and they don't reduce that to writing, but they continue to use that for five years. And then at the end of the five years, the landlord says, here's your 30-day notice. You need to go to the back of the building. And now it becomes a challenge for the tenant to do that. So it's those types of examples that, when we really drilled into it and dug into it, determined that it favored one side a little bit more than the other. And therefore, that particular provision, we addressed in the staff report and provided the rationale as to why it was excluded. The extreme of having what the City of LA required was unfair to the landlords, and to leave it in any other form was unfair to the tenants. So we just didn't touch it.
Okay.
And if I can only add, with regards to the committee, the work of the committee is complete. I'd say technically, they have been disbanded. They've met the commitment of 12 meetings. Any desire to bring something back to the committee, we would have to first survey the committee members to see if they'd like to come back on. If you recall, they were being paid per meeting as well. Have to make arrangements again to include that. And then we have the issue of the one committee member who had passed away and filling that position. And if you recall, the selection process for the committee originally took a significant amount of time to go through and select members of the committee. So just that as thought.
The selection of the committee took one meeting here of this body, as far as I recall. Did it take more than that?
One more comment about the composition of the committee. If you recall, part of the direction was to set aside funds to identify a neutral. And we did. We went through and hired someone. She attended, I think, one, maybe two meetings, and then, and then because of her own personal travel arrangements, she couldn't physically come to our meetings when we started to have these meetings. That type of a neutral would be necessary. The direction that we received from council was to have the committee come back to you with recommendations. Specifically, in certain areas, you asked for very specific recommendations, like, what should the value of the relocation be? And so in those instances, we brought back, we asked the committee to actually take a vote on those issues. But comments such as the inability to tinker with a red-line version of what the ordinance was, that wasn't part of the direction of council, to have the committee develop a new ordinance for your review. And so while the recommendations came through the committee, we did take into account additional comments, like, for example, through the stakeholders' statements that came to us, some as late as last night. And so we made one additional adjustment based on a comment that we received from the California Apartment Owners Association. And so the final product is the culmination of all of that. The concern that we have with regard to taking something back to the committee is that when the committee was asked to make specific recommendations, the communication somewhat fell apart. In that very last meeting that we had, it was somewhat contentious. And so bringing back, if the committee's going to continue, then we would really, staff would ask for that neutral person to come back, so that we're not placed in this position of trying to arbiter between the sides.
Yeah, I would just, I would say, if you, you know, there's probably a couple of different ways to do it. If, you know, ultimately, it's the council's decision whether to direct it to go back. But if, I think if you're expecting us to do that and get consensus from that committee and come back to you, that's, that might be a challenge. And then it's just, it will extend the time by which you get to consider these for enactment. So I just want to, obviously, you know, you're, it seems that you're concerned about, you know, getting something on the books sooner rather than later, so that's just something you want to take into consideration.
So what would be the easiest path to this? Would it be for you to take our considerations, our comments, suggestions, et cetera, and come back with something?
We have heard consistently this comment about the definition of a qualified tenant. And I think you're looking for something a little bit different than what's being proposed. We could, we could take a, you know, come back with not just one option, but maybe a couple of options for you to consider. And maybe break them out so that you could say, you know, we like this part, but we don't like that part, and then you could pick around that. And, you know, we can bring back anything else that we want us to bring back by way of an amendment. We can take those comments now. We're happy to do however it is that you want to do it.
I would, if I, I would suggest, if my colleagues agree, that staff does come back with that question of qualified tenant, which is one I think we still want to work on. I mean, I think what you've proposed as far as the, you know, relocation for, I can never say it, renovation, it's just an easy, short-term. I know it's painful to you. But what staff has proposed, I think is balanced. I think it's, I think it's good. I would like, I would like to have an opportunity to look at some of these things that you listed under other areas of consideration. The question of, you know, how do we, how do we do things to make sure that these are legitimate renovations that really require the tenant to be out for an extended period? You know, so you have ideas like the inspection of property, you have city oversight of permits, you have notice to city and tenant, the additional enforcement provisions. I think some of these are quite interesting, and if we were able to do some of these things, it would enhance what we have. It would make it more effective. To me, anyway, I would be comfortable going forward on that basis and not going down the path of any kind of a moratorium or any kind of a total ban on renovations the way South Pass has done it. I think it's a more nuanced, but maybe a more, more of a scalpel approach.
And I like a lot of those as well, especially the, I think it was called the assessment of the renovations. But am I the only one that is interested in the mom and pop carve-out?
I would support that, especially for those that are owner-occupied. If the owner is on premises, I think that's important. I don't know how we, and we're using mom and pop and mom and pop, but the specific definition as to what constitutes that. And if there is an owner on premises who's actually living there, I think that would be something that I would be interested in.
And I'd like to see more information on that 20 units. I think that's a lot of units. I don't know how you came, who came up with that.
It seems like you're focused on the smaller properties, and maybe the mom and pops is the misnomer, right? If you want us to look at two to four, whatever, we can certainly do that.
I would be open also to look at, you know, you said if there's an ADU, or if there's a, you know, and a main house, and there's somebody living in the main house and renting out the ADU, then they're exempt. If it's a duplex, they're exempt. But maybe we could look at slightly smaller, larger configurations. Like, I think Mr. Astori had said something about that. I think I wrote down, if you have four units, you know, in a small building, or you have six units, maybe we can, and the owner is occupying one of those, maybe that would be a more obvious kind of mom and pop environment. So maybe we could do something along those lines? Is that...
Sure. Look, I do think that we need to take into consideration those individuals, entities that own a small number of units. I don't know about what they may own elsewhere, but I think that whether you call them mom and pop, owner-occupied, I think it's important to take into consideration those owners. But again, I, am I alone in thinking that, in wanting desire to have this studied just one last time by the ad hoc committee that we had constituted? Because here's what I see this as. I feel that there are some aspects of these proposals that are good, but I feel a lot more was put into the bucket without reviewing. Fair enough, we did not give that direction, but I think we have the prerogative, and it's in line with what our intent was when we created that committee, to have a body comprised of both tenants and landlords or property owners, or a neutral party and attorneys, to study these items, to bring it back to us, for us to be able to say we've had a body comprised of all parties come to consensus. And, you know, in some areas, they have. In others, you know, staff has piled it on, partly because we've asked you to. But I think that it's, it would be worthwhile to have that exercise. I understand it's a challenge, as Mr. Garcia said, but I believe our staff is up to that challenge. And I know, and I can tell you that a number of the committee members, both tenants and property owners, along with neutral party, would be interested in that as well.
How do the others, I mean, I would rather just move forward personally. I would, I think that's just going to set us back a lot of time, a lot of effort. I think we've gotten the input. I think staff can come back to us and we can, you know, we've heard enough, I think. That's mine. That's right.
And Mayor, I agree. I think, I think let staff do the changes, do the, bring us back the alternatives, so that we can look at it. And I'd be satisfied with that.
Where are you at?
Yeah, that's where I am now. I didn't realize it would be such an ordeal, revving up the group again, getting the band back together, so. If staff has heard what we're talking about, they can put it together and give us some options. We can obviously have another chance to discuss it with the public again, so.
Yeah, okay.
So do we need...
You know, I can read the dais, but I will ask and raise that another time to make that ad hoc committee a permanent committee like some of our other agencies, neighboring cities and others have.
Okay, and I'll welcome that discussion if we can define, you know, what they would do. But for now...
So, are we introducing the ordinance or not?
Well, I would, I would ask, I would suggest not, so that we can bring you back some changes, unless you desire to. That way we can focus. So what I heard, though, was direction on, some consensus to bring you back options on the qualified tenant, on the small properties, and was there renovations, renovation-based evictions, and sort of that nuance, and other options for how to address it? Those are the three issues?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And we can leave the rest off. So when it comes back, we can focus our comments on just those three areas.
Okay. Any motion for that, or just send it back with that?
You know what? If you would provide a motion, that way we have it for the record.
Okay, so I'll move that staff come back with some options on the qualified tenant, the renovation, significant renovations, and the small owner carve-outs.
Oh, and could you add some of these items that were listed as...
Oh, the considerations.
The other considerations.
Yeah, and look at some of the assessment.
Is that, the items related to...
The assessments.
Yeah, there was a list of potential considerations, and I think the ones, at least for me, and it sounds like the councilor divine, you know, some of these ideas of reporting to the city when there's permits that are pulled that are going to cause a... cause a, a, you know, renovation, the inspections perhaps.
Pre, pre-renovation assessment.
Yeah, that's embodied, let's say that's embodied in the major.
You'd like, you'd like that in the context of, of actual red line or?
No, I think the information that we bring back.
Yeah. How that would work.
So that's my motion. Okay.
Second.
Okay. We'll call.
Councilmember Zasatiran Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Broadman.
Yes. Okay, thank you everyone for sticking it out for 10:11.
You know, so can I, before we, we dismiss staff, I do have a question, Mr. Zovak. Where would be the appropriate time for us to have the discussions or which body, you know, now that we've disbanded this landlord ad hoc committee, to have the discussions of, for instance, disrepair through neglect in apartment units that lead to abandonment or eviction? I mean, I'm thinking of, uh, the Glendale Gardens apartment, which it doesn't look like much is being done in terms of those units and their, so, so when, when do we have those types of discussions? Where is appropriate time for us to address those? If not through like an ad hoc committee like the ones that we've put together?
Mayor, councilmembers, I believe some of that's going to come up when we return with this. It's part of that discussion on, my apologies, Councilmember Najarian, but the rent eviction, right? We're, we're discussing these same kind of elements. We're looking for preventative measures here, um, some of these alternatives. That may be an appropriate time to discuss some of this. If we don't come to a solution there, then maybe that is something that comes back at another time.
Okay, okay.
Moratorium now.
All right, please.
Moratorium now. If we don't get it, shut it down.
We don't have anybody here to.
You're going to recess.
Take a recess if you want.
Yeah, we're going to leave. Bye.
Mayor Broadman, think about the moratorium. Stand by your own idea. Don't be spineless.
Moratorium now. Moratorium now. If we don't get it, shut it down. If we don't get it, shut it down. If we don't get it, shut it down. Moratorium now. Moratorium now.
Just childish. Um, okay. All right. Yeah, anger management. Okay, um, what is next? I think it's oral communication, all right?
Yes, next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have, um, four cards.
Four cards? H. Okay.
Some of those senior projects, they're three, five minutes or larger.
Okay. Let's, um, yes, if everybody could just make their way out so we can hear from our speakers. Okay, we will start oral communications with Patrick Masiehi.
Yeah. Mayor Broadman, members of city council, Patrick Masie, Glendale resident. I just wanted to congratulate Stamford, Connecticut for rejecting all 5G towers at the same time that this council decided to vote for it. Stamford is a town that's 52 square miles, bigger than Glendale. It has 135,000 people, about 50,000 less than Glendale, and they rejected 5G towers across all public poles, public land. Again, it happened earlier this month, just about the same time that you guys voted for it. Now, a couple of things about 5G that is interesting. Um, you know, Mr. R. Najarian pointed out that two homes down from his house, there's a 5G tower. And the problem with that is because, you know, I walk on his street almost once a week because it gives me a good cardio, and there's no 5G tower, Mr. Najarian, two homes down from your house.
Are you stalking me?
So, again, when you make comments where you say, well, on my street, there's a 5G tower, we can't do anything about it, there's no 5G tower on your street. In fact, the whole length of your street, there's no 5G tower. Those are the things that kind of bothers us when council members sometimes, you know, twist things a little bit just to justify their position on taking a vote on a certain subject matter. Another thing that kind of is interesting to us, and again, Ms. Devine, you might have sold your Verizon stock before the vote, but you had Verizon stock for over three years, um, AT&amp;T for almost four years. And this is part of your 700 form that you fill out. And every public official does this. And it's, you know, we have, you have to disclose this information. Now, I'm sure this year, sometime this year, you sold your stock in Verizon because there was a vote on Verizon 5G tower that you voted on. As a conflict of interest, um, you would have probably had to refrain from voting if you did have that stock earlier in November when you took the vote. Now, could you please enlighten us if you do have that stock in Verizon? And again, it's part of your two, 2022 forms that you filled out. And again, on the bottom of each section, there is an area where you do have to disclose when you purchased it and when you deposed that stock. And since both your Verizon and AT&amp;T stocks are over $10,000 valuation, you know, as you pointed out in your own forms, we just want to know if you did have those stocks two weeks ago when you voted on this issue. Uh, again, it's, it's information that you have to disclose, uh, and, uh, I hope you will answer that question tonight rather than be subpoenaed. But anyways, uh, those are the things that we're kind of, you know, wondering because none of the other city council members have any conflict of interest with, with, you know, Verizon or AT&amp;T. And this issue was about a Verizon Tower 5G. And it was already mentioned in legal documents, the word Verizon was mentioned. So if you can please disclose to us if perhaps earlier this year you sold that stock and you're no longer in possession of those telecommunications stocks, that would help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ramela Iraghi.
Yeah, in, actually, yeah. In response to your question, Ms., Mrs. Paula, that you asked the extension of, extend of the renovations of the, um, apartment building units, that's, how do you define that, how they're going to?
Sorry, I'm going to cut you off. This is oral communication on things that were not discussed during the council meeting. So there's not a continuation of the.
Yes, yes, I can.
It's not a continuation of the discussion on rent evictions.
They want to renov, convert these apartment buildings to luxury unit, Ms. Paula. It's not, the, the, in the places, yeah, they're already left.
You're out of order.
Low meter, low meter building, they're already nicely renovated. But they want to convert it to a luxury units. That, that's, that's the answer to your question.
Mr. Morgan. With some uplifting information for us.
I hope. It'll be history if nothing else. I don't know if you want to handle it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff and residents. My name is Mike Morgan, formerly Glendale Historic Preservation Commission, Commissioner. In that capacity, I came across something that sums up all that is noble and special about Glendale. The saying, greater love hath no man that he lays down his life for his friends, is exemplified in the Glendale Evening News for November 30th, 1923. Glendale at, at that time had many more railroads within its boundaries, and the article mentions an accident at Glendale Avenue and Lexington Drive, now occupied by Whole Foods Market, but then a railroad yard. I would like to read to you that article from Glendale Evening News, November 1923, 100 years ago and two days. They've handed out the thing. I'll try to go quickly though, because I know you guys have had a long night. Man, the headline is, "Man Riskes Life in Wild Ride to Catch Speeding Trolley Prevent Wreck." Runaway caught between two engines and smashed to pieces on Glendale Avenue, south of Lexington Drive. A spectacular great wreck on the Glendale Montrose Verdugo Woodlands line at 8:30 o'clock this morning sandwiched a runaway tower car between a northbound Union Pacific locomotive and number 22 of the electric line, the big new 50-ton engine recently shipped from Pittsburgh. The crash completely demolished the runaway, reducing it to kindling wood and tangled steel. Ian Bainbridge, a Union Pacific employee who risked his life in the wild ride from Verdugo Woodlands in an effort to catch the fleeing tower car, was taken to the Glendale Research Hospital, gravely injured. Presidental Hatch, manager of the Glendale Montrose Railway Company, has received a report from the hospital showing that Mr. Bainbridge suffered the fracture of six lower ribs together with punctures of the lungs and other injuries from which he is not expected to recover. For hours following the wreck, Glendale Avenue for the half-block south of Lexington Drive was littered with debris while a crew of 20 men toiled to clear the tracks. Meanwhile, traffic was held up and great crowds of people gathered to witness the aftermath of the crash. O.D. Anis, another employee of the Union Pacific Railway Company, was aboard number 22 at the time of the crash. Mr. Hatch, he was the general manager, um, states that R.E. Mead, Superintendent of the cargo, of the charge of the Union Pacific Construction, now in progress in South Glendale, minor injuries were suffered by Mr. Anis while Mr. Mead is reported to have escaped unscathed. And they go on. "The wreck occurred as a result of the air brakes on a tower car failing to work, Mr. Hatch reported following the preliminary investigation. This car had been on a sighting at Verdugo Woodlands and back of number 22. The men ran out number 22, then ran out the tower car, which was needed down in South Glendale. It was at this moment that the air brakes failed and the car started on its wild plunge into the heart of Glendale. Realizing a serious incident was imminent, the three men boarded number 22 and started after the flying tower car, which had already attained a high speed at 40 miles or more an hour. They thundered on down the valley, tearing around sharp curves without slackening their desperate speed. Meanwhile, a Union Pacific locomotive drawing a load of freight was slowly proceeding north through Glendale on the same track, while above in the foothills, the brakeless runaway hurtled on down to certain destruction. Slowly, number 22 gained on the flying car. At the, at last, they caught it. Only do you see looming ahead of them the heavy Union Pacific freight motor slowly puffing along. The brakes of 22 went on with a shriek. The Union Pacific engine sit there, hers with a jolt, groan and a jolt to a stop, but the number 22 cannot be held and the howl and howling as she slid over the rails and locked the wheels, she crashed into that mass of steel ahead cushioned by the luckless tower car in between. Witnesses say that the impact was horrific and that for some moments later, the scene was enveloped in dust. When the dust settled, it was seen that the tower car had been completely demolished and that Mr. Bainbridge was in desperate condition. Not waiting for an ambulance, an auto was commandeered and he was rushed to the Glendale Research Hospital, unconscious and bleeding at the mouth." And the reason I bring this up, other than the fact that it's 100 years ago and two days on November 30th, 1923, Mr. Bainbridge was laid to rest at Baghdad Cemetery, which is in Leander, Texas. And the city will, um, will be honoring him on the 100th anniversary with flowers at a gravesite in Leander, Texas. And, and there's a picture right there of that. And the last thing, I feel it is appropriate that we take a moment to remember Mr. Bainbridge in Glendale, where he gave his life trying to save Glendale lives but lost it on his own.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And he was only 22 years old.
Yes, he was.
22.
And I thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Twenty.
Okay.
Twenty years old.
R. Exananyan?
Born in 1903.
Is he here?
No, doesn't look like it.
Or did he leave? Okay.
He's not here.
Sevok Sorabia.
Good evening, lots again. Thank you.
A different subject, not continuing on.
Absolutely.
Okay, just making sure.
No, this time it's landlord tenant, not tenant landlord. I'd like to, I'd like to bring up this, uh, request. As a resident, I know that many of my fellow Glendaleans fly the U.S. flag at home. I do. And I value the U.S. flag. I value all the flags. And flags have their place. They have to have their due diligence paid to their well-being kept and well-being taken care of. When a flag gets worn out, you cannot simply toss it in a trash can. So I was thinking, why not have City of Glendale's Police Department and/or Fire Department accept these flags from residences and once a month, they commission them appropriately so that the residences feel good that they didn't get rid of their flags by throwing them in the trash can? Yes.
Boy Scouts actually do accept retired flags for flag retirement ceremonies.
And the Girl Scouts in Montrose or in La Crescenta, every, every year have a ceremony around a fire pit, and they collect flags and they burn them. And it's a beautiful, it's a wonderful.
Is this something that can be communicated with the residences as to where to take them? That would be good. Anyways, I thought that was a good question.
I'll put you in touch with some of the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That was an interesting one. Okay, we have a caller?
We have one caller, Damian Sullivan. Damian, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment and say I know that this has been an extraordinarily long day and a long night with, um, special city council meeting and a city council meeting and, um, a lot of very hardcore topics that I, I think were very hard to, to log through. Um, and I think it's fair to, um, have someone at least reach out tonight to say, I appreciate the stewardship of all five of you and the work that you do every day, uh, on behalf of everybody for our city. Uh, it certainly can't be, um, you're certainly getting, uh, you're, you're, you're doing more work than you're getting paid for, for sure. Um, and, and the decisions you make there are very hard, and I, I agree to disagree sometimes, and I agree, agree with you sometimes, as do many people. But I have to say that of all the great cities that I can think of, I can't think of many where the people that currently serve, um, respect, um, the feedback from people and actually return their calls, return their emails, talk to them, you know, and, and honor their ideas and thoughts and then take them into serious consideration when making really important decisions. Um, I for one find it great to, to be engaged. You know, you come to the city council meetings and you see sometimes at the end of the night now, when people get to talk, there's only two or three hearty souls left, um, because that's when you can speak. Um, and, and, and those that stay are the same five or six people. Um, you know, there's, there's, I wish there was a lot more engagement from the citizens that, that, um, take part and really care about the city that we live in and try to make it a better place and discuss the things that are important. But every time, everybody comes on a night like tonight, and, you know, there've been a lot of times in the last year with big things, Grayson Biogas plants, uh, uh, you know, GWP fees, I think. I know that this has been a really watershed year of very hard decisions that we're all figuring out together. It's, I hope you drive home, you know, when you leave these meetings knowing that, geez, it wasn't just, oh, my job is hard, I'm doing this long day. It's appreciated that we're figuring out the city and doing it together. So thank you. Thank you very much, uh, for what you do.
Well, thank you, Damian. Is that, yeah, okay. Well, I guess I'll take a motion.
Move to adjourn.
I apologize. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Mary Ruiz versus City of Glendale at L., Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 21STCV26610. In exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $50,000, this settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
You have a second?
Second.
No call please.
Councilmembers Zasatrian, Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Broadman?
Yes.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 10:32 PM. Okay.